Good morning, everybody. My name is Liz Glazer. I'm the Director of the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice. And this is my colleague Dana Kaplan, who's a Deputy Director in my office and who has been nobly leading a lot of our Rikers work. So first of all, thank you so much for letting us come here today and set the frame a little bit about what we're doing and why we're doing it. And the most challenging part of the presentation is figuring out how the clicker works. So what's being proposed here is obviously an enormous building project, but more than that, it is probably the biggest criminal justice reform effort that has happened in our city in many generations, and frankly, that has happened or is happening across the country. So New York City, as you may be aware, has both the lowest crime rate and the lowest incarceration rate of any big city in the nation. Other places have also seen drops, but ours has been steeper and more durable than in other places. But we believe that we can go lower still. And much of the work of this administration, as I'll tick through, has been to make sure that we have a jail population that is as small as possible, consistent with public safety. And we continue every day to do that and to drive that down. That we critically change the culture inside our jails in order to better promote the well-being of people who are incarcerated there, as well as the people who work there. Because at the end of the day, everyone goes home again, and it is better for everyone if we have jails that are productive places. And finally, that we have great design, because we believe that design really drives a tremendous amount of human behavior and interaction. So our goal is to close the jails on Rikers Island. Right now, there are about 10 jails on Rikers Island. We closed one this past summer. To reduce the current population of Rikers, which right now is at about 8,200, to reduce it to about 5,000 people, which would require about -- that we build about 6,000 beds. This is because the population ends up being divided, men and women, sentenced and non-sentenced, and that leads to -- that you need sort of more swing space. The idea is, once the population is down to that amount, to build four jails in Manhattan, Brooklyn, Queens, and the Bronx, to continue to drive the efforts already underway to reduce reoffending by great programming and other kinds of programs inside the jails, and to very much focus on ensuring that people who are leaving Rikers re-enter their neighborhoods and have a productive path to a better life. So basically, we've been very, very successful on this first effort, which is to reduce the population. We've had one of the steepest drops in the jail population, really in our history, down now, actually, this is a little old, but now, down almost 30% since the mayor took office, down about 12% just in the last year. And those reductions have been quite intentional and focused on various aspects of -- whoa, second coming of Christ headlines. Okay. So as I said, down 12% since last year, and has given us the lowest incarceration rate, really by a large margin of every large city in the nation. So we're about a quarter. We incarcerate about 25% of what Philadelphia does, about half of what Los Angeles and Chicago do. And as I said, it's down across every single kind of person that we -- that end up in our jails, whether it's adolescents, who, as you may know, are going to be moving off Rikers in a week, women down 21%, people in on low bail has been a very big focus, the young adult population. And the only part of the population that we've seen increasing are state prisoners who are in for technical parole violations that were required by law to house. So across every domain, whether it's population, or culture change, or moving forward to getting off the island and figuring out sort of what the right designs are, there's been a huge amount of work over the past year since the mayor announced the plan to reduce -- to close Rikers Island. And I'm pretty sure everybody knows how to read, so I won't do that hideous thing of reading every word on the slide. So these, again, we can revisit this if you like, but the way in which the population has been reduced is that a jail population is really just a function of who goes in and how long they stay. And so our focus has been to reduce the number of people who go in who don't need to be there, low-risk people. It's as simple as that. And second, because now we see our population is becoming more and more weighted towards folks who have been charged with violent offenses, critically important to reduce the length of time that they stay, and that's been an enormous piece of work with our courts, DAs, defenders, and others. So our goals here are to have smaller, safer, fairer jails, to ensure that those facilities are built in such a way that we actually are able to have the kind of programming that provides educational and vocational skills, and that attends to the health needs of our -- those who are detained. We are very focused, obviously, and this is one of the things that's driving the borough-based facilities, to ensure that people are closer to their families and their lawyers, and not isolated on Rikers Island. So there's -- this has obviously been, I was about to say, a long road. It's actually been a relatively short road to get here, but with a lot of work behind it. You may have heard about Justice -- Judge Lippman's task force that issued a report recommending this. We have a task force that consists of every single system leader, as well as leaders of nonprofits and formerly incarcerated people as well, who are focusing on how we reduce the population, change the culture, and produce the best possible design, and that's the Justice Implementation Task Force. And all of this work is building on work that has been already done by others, as well as much that lies before us. And this gives you a sense of many of the people that we're engaging with, but it's been literally hundreds of stakeholders and groups and others, work that is intensifying now, and that I think Dana may touch on a bit. Do you want to do a program, or am I doing a program? I can do a program. So as I said, I think that sort of the evidence is quite clear that the way facilities are designed and where they are has an effect on how people behave. And so it's not just that we want facilities in which we can actually have programming. The current facilities on Rikers Island are old and designed in a way that it's very hard to have programming for everybody in the facility. Our medical facilities are relatively old. The way in which we receive people into the system needs to sort of be completely revamped so that it is a dignified process of admissions that has a big effect in the way in which people come into the system and how productive their time with us is. And the way in which a facility looks, both inside and outside, is quite important. The notion that jails, like libraries, or fire stations, or other civic buildings should be assets to the neighborhood, is something that places both abroad and here have found is a way to begin to kind of normalize both what's happening inside a facility and to ensure that when people leave the facility, their transition back to their neighborhoods is as smooth as it can be. And so both inside and outside, how things look and how people interact with their environment ends up actually having quite fundamental and measurable differences in whether or not we're able to continue to drive down crime in our city. And here are sort of a few examples of how jails can look. This is Denver, which also has a very sort of interesting intersection that we hope to copy from of the jail with the courthouse, which helps reduce the amount of time between the courthouse and a jail cell, which by itself will reduce case time. And by reducing case time, we reduce the population, which obviously is one of our big aims. Here's what the jail looks like in San Diego. You -- if I didn't -- if you didn't see that it was a detention center, you might not guess that that was a jail. But access to natural light and many of the other features that you see here are all the things that lead to having a kind of normalized environment that brings down stress levels, brings down violence, and otherwise contributes to a day-to-day life within a facility that more mirrors what life on the outside is like.
So I can just say, one of the things that we -- and I'll talk about the four sites next, but one of the things that we have, of course, been very mindful of is what, in addition to the considerations and concerns of how to best operate the interior of the facilities so that they can serve the best criminal justice needs, we also, of course, are very mindful on what neighborhood concerns are and how to best integrate these facilities into the neighborhood. And so, you know, we'll talk a little bit site by site, but this is, you know, some of the things that we're looking at is with both the Bronx and Manhattan locations, there are some opportunities for other community development or affordable housing opportunities that are either at adjacent locations or at part of the same site. We are planning for some dedicated community space in each building, which we anticipate working with the neighborhood to refine what the purpose of that space would be used for. Obviously, we are looking and right now conducting a host of analyses to understand how we can best minimize any effect to local traffic conditions and reduce on-street parking. And at each of the facilities, we are providing for parking underneath the facility, because obviously, parking is a big issue that we've heard across the board. So moving into the sites, as Liz said, the plan is to replace the jails on Rikers Island with four different facilities. We are planning for facilities in Manhattan, Brooklyn, Queens, and the Bronx to get to 6,000 beds total. We are proposing four 1,500-bed facilities. And I will say that, you know, as in addition to the 10 jails that exist right now on Rikers Island, that there are just upwards of 2,000 beds available in the borough locations. So to get to 6,000 beds in the burrows requires an additional, of course, capacity off of Rikers Island beyond what we currently have. In three of the four boroughs, we are looking at the sites where there are existing DOC facilities, or that was part of the initial kind of area of focus. In the Bronx, the existing DOC facility right now is the barge, or it's a boat. And so that is not something that we believe is the most appropriate long-term vision of, you know, the type of model criminal justice system that we are proposing. The other criteria that we looked at, or that all -- that these sites all meet, is proximity to public transportation, city-owned locations, proximity to the courthouses, to the extent that, you know, a key purpose here, as Liz said, is improving case processing times and the effective delivery of justice by being next to the courts, that that was, of course, an important criteria as well. And again, at three of these sites where there are existing DOC facilities, that were the sites that we were looking at. In Manhattan, I should say that, you know, that -- and we started our area of focus looking at the Manhattan Detention Center. That's an existing DOC facility located right next to the New York County Criminal Courthouse. We are now proposing that the new facility be constructed at 80 Center Street, which is the facility also directly adjacent to the courts. So some of the criteria in terms of why we think that this is the more appropriate site is that the Manhattan location is really at the edge of these three neighborhoods, Tribeca, Chinatown, and of course, the Civic Center, where the courthouses are, City Hall, the federal courts, our offices. And so by pulling the proposed detention facility to 80 Center Street instead of the existing site of the current jail at MDC North and MDC South, we're actually drawing the detention facility closer to the Civic Center. So as you can see, the 80 Center Street location is still certainly adjacent to Chinatown, but it is closer to the Civic Center and closer to where there's other types of comparably scaled government buildings. And again, this is some of the building height context. So drawing the site closer to 80 -- at 80 Center Street and closer to the Civic Core also puts it closer to, as I said, some of the other buildings that make it a little bit more appropriate in scale. So this is the lot area, and again, we're providing kind of a high-level overview, and of course, we'll be back to talk in much more detail about exactly what all -- or the proposed changes being contemplated at these locations, but wanted to give you that preview of what the reasoning and analysis has been to date and where we stand in this plan. So this is the access diagram, just in terms of both indicating where there is the provision of staff parking, and then also where we have an allocation of community space. The intention is to keep the -- 80 Center Street, of course, has a very historical facade, and so we are currently proposing to keep the historic facade and construct the detention facility within that. And I think the other thing that is -- so as part of the plan, what we would do is that 80 Center Street right now is the offices, some court space, and also the offices of the District Attorney of New York. And so what we are planning to do is to, as we move the District Attorney of New York out of 80 Center Street to develop that new detention facility there, we would rebuild MDC South as the place for courts, as well as the District Attorney. MDC North, which is currently the North Tower, would be something that we would return to the neighborhood to be used for affordable housing, senior housing. It's not part of this U-LARP action, but we would be committed to working with the neighborhood to determine whatever the appropriate use of that facility would be. And so that's something that we believe is a real asset to this plan, that again, by moving the detention facility further from Chinatown, closer to the Civic Core, we can both have it contextualized within a more appropriate scale and also return a full North -- the North Tower to the Chinatown community and to that neighborhood. As I pointed out in the beginning, there is an allocation of community space, and that is because one of the things that we are mindful of is that although it is closer to the Civic Core, there is a side of the 80 Center Street site that is adjacent to a park, that is, you know, certainly something that is very utilized by the neighborhood. We think that it is appropriate to have something that is adjacent to that park and that community use that might be some other type of neighborhood asset. This is just a rendering or vignette of what it could be. In the past, we have heard from the council member and from some neighborhood leaders that a community cultural center is something that they had hoped to build at that site, and so that's why that is what this rendering is, but that is a use to be determined in consultation with the local neighborhood leaders. The Brooklyn location. So 275 Atlantic Avenue is the site of the current Brooklyn House of Detention. It is the edge between kind of the large-scale of downtown and then the lower residential scale to the south. So you can see that that's the site of the existing facility. Again, you know, it's currently operated by Department of Corrections, near to public transportation, near to the courts. This is the adjacent context of that existing facility and some other proposed developments. So again, it's kind of on that edge between downtown and lower residential scale, so that's something that we're trying to be mindful of in our planning. Some contexts for the facility. And one of the things that, as I'm sure you all are well aware, Atlantic Avenue itself has quite a retail frontage to the neighborhood. The existing Brooklyn House of Detention is a little bit of a dead zone when you get to that -- the front of the street. And so one of the things that we have certainly received feedback on and that we are proposing for this new facility is that we would have some type of live, whether it's retail or some other type of community use, on the Atlantic Avenue exterior. That is something that we believe would be much more appropriate in terms of better integrating it within the neighborhood, and one of the things that we've heard from some local neighborhood and business leaders. So that's, as you can see, where the community entrance would be, on Atlantic Avenue, the Sally Port on Smith Street, and the entrance for staff, as well as State Street. And then right now, there is already -- the visitor entrance is on Borough Place. That is something that we are proposing, that we would keep the visitor entrance on Borough Place, but one of the things that happens right now is that there's kind of -- there's no actual appropriate waiting area, so people are lined up on the street. One of the things that Liz mentioned in the beginning, when she talked about the program overall, is the extent to which we are planning for just better points of access in terms of visitation, waiting rooms, and the ways that which people can enter and exit the facility. So we are planning to have a much more appropriately-sized visiting area and access point so that visitors to the facility can not, you know, have to line up on the street, but can actually wait inside, and there's the opportunity for perhaps access to services and other types of community amenities within that interior of the location as well. I think this is a little bit more indication of that. Again, a kind of vignette or rendering of what we contemplate that the exterior could look like along Atlantic Avenue, which we think is just going to be actually much better for the street life. The Bronx, as I said in the beginning, one of the, you know, frankly, challenges of the Bronx location is that unlike in the other three boroughs, there was not an existing DOC facility next to a courthouse. The existing DOC facility in the Bronx is the barge of V.C. Vernon C. Bain Correctional Center. It's located pretty far from any type of public transportation and is not something that, you know, we felt best aligned with the kind of reform vision of our criminal justice system. So the site that we are proposing is 320 Concord Avenue. It is currently being used as the NYPD tow pound. So the context, it's near to public transportation. It's not exactly, you know, next to the courts, but it certainly has a better relative proximity than other possible locations, and it has that, you know, clear access point to the One of the things that we also, you know, have been aware of in terms of this current site is that, as you can see, on one side, it's mainly industrial and manufacturing. There are one- and two-family and multifamily homes on one side of the facility. So it's really mainly primarily surrounded by industrial, although there is an adjacency to residential, and that was one of the things that we wanted to be mindful of as well. It's a view east down 141st Street. This is the view south of Concord Avenue, those residential family homes that I referenced. And this is the transit and automobile access points. To be mindful of the fact that there is that -- those residential areas and that, you know, this is certainly an area in which there's been a lot of desire for other types of community development and opportunities. As we are currently proposing this, the proposal is for justice-related uses to be on one side of the lot, and that the other side would have a dedicated area for potential community development, and that could be affordable housing or other types of retail opportunities, things that we've heard from the neighborhood could be of use, or things such as a supermarket. We are working with the neighborhood and the council member on what exactly that would look like, but that is something that we believe can kind of best meet the needs of providing the space for the new detention facility while also ensuring that the parts of the lot that are near to the neighborhood can benefit from having another type of community development location or use. And again, this is a rendering or vignette of what this might look like. And then finally, the Queens location. So in Queens, we were also looking at a facility that is an existing DOC facility. The facility has not been used for overnight detention in many years, but it is currently in use for DOC staff and training, and it currently is in use for intake and court access. So when we -- it currently has a capacity of about 400 beds. So this is one of the facilities or one of the sites that, as we looked towards how we could possibly provide the types of programming and capacity needs that would be required, we had to think about what other opportunities might be available. There is an existing municipal parking lot that is directly next door to the Queens Detention Facility that is recently completed but underutilized. And so what we are currently planning for is to use the site of the existing Queens Detention Facility, as well as part of the municipal parking lot, to be able to provide the full program for the new facility. We would do so by also creating a multi-level parking lot adjacent to the facility so that there would not only not be a loss of parking spaces, but actually would be a gain. It would be more parking than what's currently provided at this site. So this is just a, you know, indication in terms of the centrality to public transit and different highways, the surrounding area. The plans in terms of using 82nd Street Avenue -- or 82nd Avenue as the arrival point, and again, as you can see, the footprint of the surface parking lot in addition to the jail. That would be the division between the new facility, and then that would be the adjacent And this is the vignette or rendering as to what this might look like. The Queens Detention Facility is another one that is kind of embedded in a different kind of campus-like atmosphere in terms of it's next to the courts, next to the District Attorney's Office, the Family Justice Center. There's not really a clear entry point into that area, and so this is something that we believe could better provide more of an open campus. In terms of where we are, of course, we issued the draft scope on August 15th, and we are -- and our scoping comment period runs until October 15th. We have been engaged in a significant amount of community and neighborhood engagement. So we have had one of the scoping hearings and have three more scheduled in the next few weeks, but have also been engaged in a number of different, both open and closed community meetings in conjunction with the council members and all another, you know, the other electeds, to ensure that we can as best as possible include the different neighborhood-level concerns into this. Our plan is for U-LARP certification by the end of this year, and of course, you all are very familiar with the calendar of what that would look like moving forward, but we wanted to share where we are in this. And again, as we said when we opened, you know, you will be hearing a lot more from us on this, and there's, I'm sure, many, many questions and details that we can come back with, but we did want to provide just a preview as to, you know, where we are, but also what the purpose of this endeavor is for the city.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Capelli.
I have a couple of questions. On Brooklyn House, are you planning building up on that, or just?
Or just using the space inside? You are planning on going higher, on a higher?
Yes. It would -- so it would be -- so first of all, we'll be demolishing the Brooklyn House of Detention. It's a very, very It's a very, very old facility. It is, you know, right now, the size of the cells, for instance, don't meet the current, you know, don't meet the current standards. And it's certainly not, you know, there's not direct supervision model. There's very little programming and recreation space. We also, it currently has a capacity of about 800. And so, you know, in addition to the need to expand the capacity to go to 1,500, there's of course the need to provide that additional programming, recreation, outdoor space that doesn't, that doesn't exist at the current site. And so what we are proposing is a facility of about 400 feet.
And the plan is for 1,500 capacity units in the boroughs?
1,500 at each location.
With 4,000 on the current Rikers site?
So that, so we would close, so there would be no capacity at Rikers Island?
It would be completely closed?
We'd become, yes.
Okay. And have you been talking to the correction officers about this as well?
Yes. And we've certainly invited the correctional officers and the unions to a number of different focus groups on this. I would say, in addition to the correctional officers, we've extended invitations to staff who work in education, healthcare, nonprofit program providers, and correctional officers to focus groups. I, you know, I will say that to be forthright, COBA hasn't accepted every invitation that we've extended to be part of the process, but we've made sure that, you know, we've engaged with as many staff as possible at DOC. And there's been a number of forums that the Department of Correction has done to get staff feedback in other ways that we are also drawing into this process so that we can, as much as possible, ensure that their concerns and perspective is addressed and are extending follow-up invitations to them to review where we are today.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Two questions. With regard to 80 Center Street, and I personally think an ingenious to build on top of the building, would that entail the closing of the so-called Tombs facility? I think it's on White Street?
Yes. So basically, we are closing the Tombs, building a new detention facility at 80 Center. The two, you know, the Tombs, the North and the South Tower. The South Tower would become the new district attorney's space. And then the North Tower would be returned to the neighborhood to be developed into some, used to be determined, of a non-criminal justice, you know, purpose. So one of, you know, we've heard senior housing, we've heard, you know, a number of different suggestions. But essentially, yes, we would close the Manhattan Detention Center, the Tombs, and we would have one new detention facility at the 80 Center Street site.
Okay. The second question is, I understand one of the guiding principles of this endeavor was to make it more convenient for visitation relatives, loved ones, visiting the incarcerated. So what determines where you are detained? Is it where you are arrested or where you live? If you're arrested in the Bronx, but you live in Queens, where would you be detained?
So the recommendation at this point is that it would be, the placements would be primarily based off of borough of residence. However, there would be some operational flexibility so that if someone had a case that was expecting, you know, many different court appearances in the near future, or there was an expectation that they might not be in a facility for very long, there could be some flexibility to make a placement decision based off of borough of arraignment. But the overarching principle, it would be a preference for borough of residence. And of course, there's, in many, in many times, overlap between those two populations.
Commissioner Odi.
I thank you for this presentation. I will say that the fact that you, you know, you're looking at city-owned land really underscores the need to maintain these land use assets, these land assets for the city. I know we've seen, you know, we've talked about the selling versus leasing of assets. So I would, you know, this, I think this speaks volumes about that. So to follow up on the question about, you know, where people are detained, I see that you're distributing sort of these 1,500-bed facilities evenly. What is the breakdown of the current population by borough? And that, did that inform how these beds were distributed?
So we can get you the exact number. It's not, it's not dramatically different when we think about, you know, not just what it is today, but what it might, what it will look like in terms of an analysis of where it will be, you know, many years from now. We had to do, you know, some work to think about those considerations. There are, right now, there is a higher percentage of the population that has boroughs of arraignment from Manhattan, just because there's more, you know, people that might live in other boroughs that are arrested in Manhattan. So there's a slight variation there. But overall, it's not specifically, especially if you look at borough of residence, there's not a dramatic difference in terms of that distribution between the four.
So you're saying there's somewhat even distribution by borough of residents?
Yes.
Okay. One other follow-up question. What's the zoning designation that allows for this type of facility? And so are you then planning to map new zoning designations in each of these places?
So I would have to defer to other folks on the team that have the greater expertise on those, the zoning questions specifically.
Hey, guys.
And he happens to be here.
I thought I'd show up. So jail is a use that's actually permitted in a wide variety of zoning districts, from C to all the commercial and manufacturing districts except C1. So it's actually kind of pretty broadly located. There's a lot of different actions and the kind of ways that we'll talk about that. We wanted to kind of leave that for when we actually are certifying this and kind of go through the kind of minutia of the technical stuff. But generally, there'll be special permits, there'll be some mapping actions and things like that to facilitate the projects, dispose.
So in most cases, we're looking at a rezoning or we're not?
I think in most cases, there won't be a need for a specific zoning map change.
Oh, okay.
But there'll be a lot of other actions associated with that.
Okay. You answered my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Eri.
Just one quick question. Is this intended to be one ULP application or four separate applications?
It is one ULP, and it's one ULP for the closure of Rikers Island. And so that's, you know, because we cannot close the facilities on Rikers Island, you know, with just any one of these facilities as part of the intention there.
And again, I want to stress the very early phase of it. This really was more about the program and will obviously be coming back with a lot more information about the mechanics of the how.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Deloze.
I hope this question fits within that boundary. So it sounds like this is going to have to have a phased approach, you know, given what needs to happen here and the fact that some of these facilities are already housing people or being utilized and they would be, you know, used differently in the future. Can you talk, can you give us a sense of how you anticipate that rolling out as part of this process?
So I think others can come and give, you know, a slightly more comprehensive timeline. I'll say that certainly for both the Manhattan and Brooklyn Detention Centers, obviously, you know, there are people who are currently in residence at those facilities. And so, you know, what we potentially will have to, as we roll this out, will, you know, in the sequencing, have to have some portion of the population that potentially is moved back to Rikers Island. We've got lots of empty space on Rikers Island because the jail population has come down so much. At the same time, we're seeing sustained reductions in the number of people in detention. And so that, you know, might actually allow that, that greater capacity that it's freed up might allow us to, you know, not have to move as many people back to the island, you know, depending on how the timeline overall. In the Manhattan location, obviously, we need to, you know, in order to construct the space for the district attorney, you know, we'll be thinking about a phased approach in which we're, you know, moving people out of the South Tower, redeveloping that before we can actually do the renovation of 80 Center Street itself for the detention facility. So that's part of the phasing plan. The total timeline at this point has an end date that we contemplate at 2027. That's aligned with, you know, what the mayor had said when we first announced the administration's commitment to close the jails on Rikers Island. We do have this design-build procurement method, which we anticipate, you know, this is the first city project that will be going through the design-build method. And, you know, we received legislation that allows us to do that, which we think is a great opportunity. So we think that there might be some savings on the timeline as a result of that. But, you know, I think we'll, as we move forward, that will be better refined.
Commissioner Ephraim.
Thank you for coming. It looks like you have a really busy week.
Very busy.
And at what point in that timeline will the discussion about what happens to Rikers be part of the public discussion or?
So there are no current plans for the future of Rikers Island. I think it's obviously something that, at the appropriate time, there'll, you know, need to be a, you know, robust discussion around. And, you know, I think that that's a conversation that we look forward to having at some point. It's not currently part of this action and not something that there's, you know, current intentions behind. So that is something that will happen as we move kind of further down the road.
But will it be run by your team?
I think that we're still, you know, figuring out exactly the best way to have that conversation.
Okay. I'm sure we'll hear more. Yeah. Stay tuned.
It'll be a much better world when this has actually come to pass and we do have the ability to plan for magnificent piece of land. Yes, Commissioner Levin.
For the Manhattan site, I think the identification of 80 Center Street in the scoping document came as something of a surprise to a group of folks convened by the Borough President who'd been mostly thinking that you were looking at 125 White Street. And so there's a certain amount of adjustment, mental adjustment that has to happen for people to get their heads out of one thing they thought they were being engaged with about and into another one. But 80 Center Street has some pretty visible public services in it, including most notably the Marriage Bureau, which as I understand it, has turned into not only a great place to get married, but also a driver of tourism and all sorts of other economic development. I think also in 80 Center Street, there are a number of justice-related organizations that have received, actually quite recently, some significant city investment. Where are, have you gotten deep enough into this to know where those facilities can go?
So we have been speaking with all of the organizations and, you know, are aware of what obviously will have to be relocated as part of this. You know, we do have a little bit of time to figure that out. You know, I think the assumption is that certainly to the extent that these are services that are most appropriate in the relative proximity in downtown Manhattan, we'll be looking for other office space or other, you know, dedicated space there. And that's something that, you know, are, we'll be working with, again, with those, with those tenants. I think absolutely, you know, we've obviously heard the, you know, that the selection of 80 Center Street was a surprise for some. And, you know, I think early on, we were, we were getting some feedback from different electeds and from different community members about the two options. We did ultimately go with 80 Center Street just because of the reasons that I, you know, mentioned, that we thought that just the net positives in terms of it being, it's a larger site than the other, where the 125 White Street is. The 125 White Street location has a street that goes through it, which is currently being used as kind of, it's used for pedestrian traffic, but it's also kind of used as an open air, it's like a parking lot. And so, but we know it's an important crossway for people who are coming from, you know, coming from the subway. So we didn't want to close that street off. If we weren't going to close that street off, then the buildings, you know, using the 125 Street location would be, you know, taller, like would be even taller. So that was one of the considerations, I think, you know. So the fact that the scale would be better and more appropriate closer to the Civic Center and that we could then return MDC North to the neighborhood was what we thought was, you know, why this was just the better choice. But absolutely want to and are committed to working with the neighborhood and the community on a very robust engagement process moving forward to make sure that they are a part of, you know, how decisions on the site are made. And again, you know, both on what the ultimate use is of the MDC North Tower, but also what, you know, community concerns and neighborhood issues might be about both what happens at 80 Center Street, but also, you know, the relocation of those other programs and services such as the Marriage Bureau.
I actually had a couple of questions. I was taken by the two visuals that you had of the other newer jails, and I wondered if you knew what the capacity was of those jails. I'm trying to get a sense of how they would compare to our facilities.
So although we have the lowest incarceration rate in the nation, sadly, people have smaller populations. And so those are really much smaller facilities. None of them are 1,500-bed facility. They're probably, you know, a third or half of that.
And are there, are we aware of other 1,500-bed facilities? Again, I'm trying to dimension, understanding that we're New York, where we're much bigger.
So we do have other high-rise facilities, both in New York City, obviously, but also there are some federal facilities. Chicago is one, and there are a couple of others. One of the issues here and challenges is going to be that we do think that a 1,500-bed facility in a dense urban environment, this is going to be a first. And that's something that obviously we're considering very carefully.
And just to, just to add to Liz's point, one of the other things, so there are certainly other 1,500-bed facilities. Some of the things that we have to also take into consideration is, you know, in some places, there's more use of dorms. We think that in some places, there's the ability to do kind of double bunks in a single housing unit. We are planning for it to be almost entirely single rooms because we think that that is better programmatically and operationally. And so it is just one thing to note that, you know, I think that we could say that you could do 1,500 beds with a smaller footprint, but, you know, if we're really kind of striving for the best design and that programming and outdoor recreation space and also, you know, have the specific regulations in terms of how many people can be in a room, that's another point of consideration.
As New Yorkers, part of our gestalt is being first. So I don't think there needs to be any shame about that. But I do think it would be helpful, when we're further down, to give us a sense comparatively so that we see ourselves in context, see how it's operated before. The one other thing I would note for the commission is that Pernama has been representing us on one of the subgroups focusing on design of the prison and that she has agreed to continue this work in her private sector capacity. Of course, the department will continue to provide expert input, but I do welcome the fact that she will stay on in that role.
Yeah. She's been an extraordinarily valuable partner and co-chairs our design committee, which created design principles that have been followed in order to create the program. And we're just incredibly pleased that she's interested in continuing the work with us.
Great. Well, thank you very much for the presentation.
Great.
Thanks all for your time.
Next, we have Cecilia Kushner of the Economic Development Corporation to describe the city's programs in support of the fashion industry.
It'll come up. Yeah. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair Lago. Good afternoon, Commissioner. So again, my name is Cecilia Kushner. I'm a senior vice president at the Economic Development Corporation. I work in the development group, and I'm here to give you some background information about EDC and the city at large's work in supporting the fashion industry. So today I'll touch on the state of fashion and garment manufacturing in New York City, the ongoing investment that we're making in the sector, as well as recent efforts by EDC especially to provide real estate stability to the garment manufacturing industry in its historic location in the garment district. So fashion obviously is an iconic part of New York City's DNA. It's a critical part of the city's overall economy. Just Fashion Week in the last couple of weeks alone generated millions of dollars in revenues and continues to make our city the global fashion center. Local garment manufacturing is a critical piece of New York City's fashion ecosystem. It is competitive in time, in quality, and in convenience, and it supports the industry, design, and innovation. It really serves two types of designer. It provides emerging designers the ability It provides emerging designers the ability to produce their collection locally in small samples that would not find a market abroad and to make their name in this competitive industry. And it also allows more established designers to do real-time prototyping and differentiate their brand by producing locally. Since 2014, the city has heavily invested in education, real estate, and programmatic initiatives to support the fashion industry. The city committed about $74 million, sorry, to build FIT, a new building in Manhattan. This is complementing the same amount of money from the state towards what is a state education facility. EDC is also investing in a Made in New York campus at Bush Terminal in Sunset Park to dedicate manufacturing space for both the fashion and the film industry, which are two highly iconic industry and important and vital to our economy. Sunset Park is the second largest cluster of garment manufacturers in New York City with over 100 firms already located there. And finally, the administration tripled the investment in the industry from $5 million to $15 million through a variety of programs and initiatives that are all being managed at EDC. And I'll give you a little bit more detail about them. So to support the entire value chain of the fashion industry, EDC have committed to providing a range of programming fashion initiative. And at EDC, we have what we call the Fashion Desk, which is a group of people who are dedicated to work in partnership with the fashion and garment manufacturing industry to move forward a number of programs that are generally co-financed by the industry and by the city. So the range of initiatives include partnerships with educational institutions and FIT and Parcels, Parson, as well as retail brand promotion through the Made in New York partnership, which is something that's very important to this administration. Programs are focused on supporting the talent pipeline in the fashion industry by funding industry internships and highlight top design talent and connect them with the more than 900 fashion headquarters we have in New York City. We also provide marketing for Made in New York designated designers. These are designers that are committed to produce 75% of their production in New York City, so to use local manufacturing for their brand. We also support the industry for microfinancing program and retail activation. And finally, we support local manufacturing through the fashion manufacturing initiatives. This is a very successful initiative and we are in our sixth round right now. This is managed and launched in partnership with CFDA, which is the Council of Fashion Designers of America. It aims to provide grants for companies that seek to make investment in technology. So we're talking about like 3D printers, knitwear, like highly high-end garments that needs the support and technology to be able to be competitive, both in the New York City market, but globally as well. Over the past five years, in partnership with CFDA, we've distributed close to $3 million to 25 factories. And we launched the sixth round of FMI competition in June and we're currently with CFDA reviewing responses. So it's impossible to talk about fashion and garment manufacturing without talking about its historic location, which is the Garment District. The Garment Center is the historic and still current home of New York City fashion. Fashion-related uses occupy more than half of all the least commercial and manufacturing spaces in the preservation area. Fashion office and showrooms are on the rise. Our global businesses wants to call the Garment Center their home and the incredible transit access is attractive to fashion buyers that can come through Penn Station and through Grand Central Station. The Garment Center also remain the largest clusters of fashion manufacturers in the city. There's approximately 700,000 square feet of production left. That represents about 250 firms in the preservation area in the special district and about the same amount of square footage outside of the preservation area in the special district, but in and around as well. These firms encompass all the subsectors of fashion production. You can find pattern making, sampling, jewelry, accessory, and wholesale as well. I just want to note for context that these numbers represent a 92% decline in space occupied by fashion manufacturers since 1987, when the special zoning was put in place. And the rate of that decline really mirrors the national and state decline we've seen in garment manufacturing across the nation, as a lot of these jobs have moved overseas. Over time, the Garment District has become a true mixed-use district. We have commercial office, including fashion, manufacturing, hotel, and residential units. The district, and this is something especially at EDC we're very interested in, has seen an extraordinary influx of new jobs and office space that occupy formerly vacant space in this lofted building. We've seen a 50%, more than 50% increase in job in the last decade. So just in this 12-block area, we have close to 66,000 jobs. So this is like a remarkable center for economic development in such a small part of New York City, small part of Manhattan. And because of its incredible location, the district has also seen a significant amount of hotel growth. More than 5,000 rooms have been built in less than 10 years. So to respond to these changing economic trends in the Garment Center and especially the continuing decline of fashion manufacturing in its historic location, which is really important again to support the overall fashion ecosystem. Last year around this time, Speaker Johnson, was it Time Council member Johnson, and Manhattan Borough President Brewer convened and co-chair a Garment Center Steering Committee to identify non-zoning-based solution to help stabilize garment manufacturing in the district, in the historic home of fashion, and to make sure the city and all of these stakeholders that have been engaged in this issue for a real long time could see a path for long-term stability. The Steering Committee was comprised of a group of stakeholders that represented the industry, both the fashion industry and garment manufacturers, including people representing workers, community boards, advocacy organizations that have been at the center of this issue for a real long time, as well as the real estate interest of property owner. The group met for three months and released a report in August of last year that outlined a set of recommendations. And we've been working on basically implementing these recommendations since then. So there were three buckets, three themes of conversation: real estate, workforce development and business support, and placemaking. Needless to say, real estate occupied probably like 98% of the time of the group and was really seen as the most important topic to discuss and to resolve. Stability in location allows the garment manufacturers to make long-term business decision and it helps preserve the historic garment ecosystem in its historic location. Given the lack of city real estate in the Garment Center, the city does not really own any real estate that would be suitable for manufacturing or kind of honestly, any real estate that would be available for any kind of use at all, which is typically the easiest way for the city to provide long-term stability for industrial businesses that are scattered around a large area in that fashion. The Steering Committee coalesced around the need to be creative and to study the possibility of using other real estate tools such as IDA, as well as acquisition, to incentivize and partner with garment center landlords and make sure that garment manufacturers had the benefit of long-term stability. So through the IDA program, which is a specific custom program for the Garment Center and the building acquisition idea, we're really trying to provide fashion manufacturing with the ability of maintaining a long-term presence in the Garment Center. We carefully structured the program to capture every business along the fashion supply chain and including recently amending the definition for the IDA program to include supplier, which was really seen as a really important ingredient of the ecosystem in the Garment Center. What was really important to the group is that the benefits to the manufacturers be very clear and predictable. So fashion manufacturers tenants that are part of buildings participating in the IDA, but also that would be tenants of the building that the city will acquire with a non-for-profit for the RFEI, would be given 15-year leases, maximum gross rent of $35 a square foot. A gross rent includes utility, common charge areas, and any fees, and it generally represents a $25 to $30 per square foot effective rent. So it's a very desirable, affordable rent for the location of the Garment Center. Another thing that was really important for the Steering Committee is for the city is enforcement. And so the compliance department at EDC, as well as the legal department, will ensure that upon IDA approval and upon closing the deals for IDA, that the leases with all the tenants in the building actually reflect these public benefits that are in the program. And they will, and there is yearly compliance that property owners and tenants need to abide by. So we developed a custom Garment Center IDA program, really to incentivize property owners to participate into the collective goal of the Steering Committee in the city, which is to provide real estate stability to garment manufacturers. Just for context, IDA is a subsidiary of EDC. We help support businesses across the five boroughs to expand and relocate by providing discretionary tax relief, tax relief, sorry. It's basically property tax abatement. Typical IDA deals are capitally intensive and are not located below 96th Street in Manhattan. So we really looked to custom the program here to make it work for the Garment Center. The IDA is an appointed board with a representative for each Borough President and the mayor, in addition to dedicated compliance staff. So the Garment Center IDA program targets a wider geography than the preservation area of the special district and even a wider geography than the special district itself. We are targeting the Garment District bid, the Garment District Alliance geography that really encompasses where the ecosystem is being located. We specifically targeted buildings that have substantial garment manufacturing space and we've defined that as a minimum of 25,000 square feet in the building to be eligible for IDA, understanding that these property owners would be more inclined to enter in the program to keep like a critical mass of their tenants in the long term. The real estate tax benefit is applied to the entire property square footage, but is commensurate with the amount of fashion manufacturing that is located in the building. So a building gets a dollar of tax abatement for 25,000 square feet of fashion manufacturing in the building, $2 for 50,000 square feet, $3 for 50,000 square feet. So for example, if a property is 100,000 square feet in size and building and half of the building, about 50,000 square feet, is comprised of fashion manufacturing, the property will receive $200,000 a year in tax abatement for 15 years. In exchange for that tax abatement, the property owner is required to give garment manufacturing tenants 15-year leases and with a gross rent that is kept at $35 a square foot. The program launched this June and we just brought three properties that total 200,000 square feet of fashion manufacturing space to the board about a couple of weeks ago, where they were authorized and approved to receive the abatement. This means considerable real estate security for the businesses in this building and our commitment is to aggressively continue to market this program, to sign as many buildings as possible and provide the benefits of the IDA to as many tenants as possible. In addition to the IDA program, we're working towards a request for expression of interest for building acquisition for production space. That's an RFEI that we release in the coming week to secure dedicated garment manufacturing space in the Garment District. This was a major long-term desire of the Steering Committee and the elected official that were part of it. So to meet this goal, the city is going to put forth up to $20 million of city funding to partner with a non-for-profit partner to acquire a building in the Garment Center. So the combination of the city's funding, again, up to 20 million, the non-for-profit equity will leverage debt financing and allow this partnership to acquire a sizable building in the Garment District. We believe that the combination of these two programs really provide a well-rounded and comprehensive approach to long-term stability for fashion manufacturing in a district and we're excited to see them move forward. And I just want to finish by talking about the city and other parties' commitment to continued programmatic investment, even though it was not at the forefront of the conversation with the Steering Committee. Real estate stability is not the only type of support that the industry needs in order to be able to thrive and to continue to compete globally. So as part of the Steering Committee recommendation, the city, the CFDA, and the Garment District Alliance, which is the local bid representing the area, have agreed to funding and to deploy a set of programs to support garment manufacturers and designers committed to local production. So on the slide, you can see the themes that were really discussed and prioritized by the group. Continued technology modernization was really seen as something important to support competition and innovation. Workforce development was also necessary to both accompany the change in technology and make sure that like the staff is being trained to use the new machine, but also to make sure that like highly specialized craftsmanship is being trained so we have the next generation of this talent in New York City. Industry organization and technical assistance were also deemed necessary to provide business with the support that they need to operate in an increasingly global environment and a very changing fashion industry where speed has become part of how collections are being thought through. Marketing and branding was also necessary to both advertise and celebrate the incredible skills and product that come out of local production and to begin to shift the consumer's perspective and appreciation for what it means to buy a piece of garment being made locally. And finally, support, continued support for emerging designers that really rely on garment manufacturers and are really the main client. So this suite of programs, both the IDA, the RFEI, all the programs that we're doing in partnership with the Garment District Alliance and CFDA, we think are really kind of a unique opportunity to support this industry in place and to support the Garment District as the historic and future home of fashion in New York. So with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions? Yes, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, Cecilia. With regard to the building, our request for expression of interest and particularly the not-for-profit partner, who do you envision there and why the not-for-profit category?
Sure. I think like the way we're envisioning the RFEI, and I think there was consensus in the Steering Committee, was that it needs to be, the structure of the partnership needs to be flexible because there are a lot, we need both a partner and a building. And so then it needs to be written in such a way that is attractive and bring competition. But the Steering Committee was really clear that within this partnership, there needs to be a non-for-profit. I think there was real desire that there is an organization that is mission-aligned with the vision of providing long-term stability for fashion manufacturing in the Garment Center and that the only way to do that effectively was to have a non-for-profit that was truly mission-aligned with that vision. So that was something that was really important as part of the conversation.
So a building owner, he or she would align themselves with a nonprofit in order to respond to this request for expressions of interest?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ephraim.
Thank you. I'd like to bifurcate my comments and questions into two distinct areas. One is to congratulate you on reaching a consensus on this and to thank you and everyone else who participated for an awful lot of hard work on this. The other is just to say that I think we need to acknowledge that we have a failure on our hands and that failure being something that was put in place in 1987 to keep one of the vital industries in New York alive. And it was the lack of enforcement essentially that seems to have led to the failure. If it's true that there were 8 million square feet in 1987 in this area devoted to garment manufacturing and related industries, and now there's only 180,000 square feet left in garment manufacturing as distinct from wholesale and showroom space, I think that just, if that is in fact true, which is a number in our readings, I think we just need to acknowledge that there was no enforcement. And I think we as a body have a real interest in making sure enforcement happens in many different capacities. We've seen this in manufacturing in SoHo. And in fact, there are mechanisms for enforcement that go beyond Department of Buildings. And we're in control of one of those on a pretty regular basis in making decisions about where the city engages in city leases or disposition of property, which is something we do virtually every time we meet. And it seems to me, if there are bad actors who violate the intent and the terms of the activity that the city has seen as important, specifically violating the terms of the special garment district, those bad actors shouldn't be entitled to have city leases in the future. So I put out an idea, it probably has a lot of flaws, but it's just to show that there should be more than one way for the city to accomplish its economic goals. And you said in your presentation that the city's ownership of property is the only way that it best usually does this. I think there are other ways we need to look at if the city in fact does not own property in neighborhoods where previous generations have seen an activity. We have no idea if the global change in garment manufacturing We have no idea if the global change in garment manufacturing is ultimately the reason why there's very little activity here. We really don't know because the experiment was never really allowed to succeed the way it was intended. It was an artificially created, market-reduced environment for low-cost manufacturing space. And as soon as there was no enforcement of it, that market-based part disappeared. And of course, what came in was a lot of economic activity of the office type because they paid more rent. And I just feel it needs to be stated, and it does not diminish the success of bringing back these recommendations. So I'll get off my soapbox there. But I would also add that it seems to me that New York becomes no different than a city like Atlanta, Georgia, that has a ton of showrooms for garment companies, fashion designers, with a lot cheaper hotel rooms, by the way, and probably many more flights that are less expensive too than New York, unless there is a large concentration of manufacturing and vitality. So in the name of trying to encourage even more, and I think 200,000 square feet coming before the IDA this month is a really good start, it seems to me the city should be setting goals, whether it's 400,000 or 500,000 or a million square feet to come through the IDA, and that none of the recommendations for changing over the other space should happen until a certain threshold is met.
Do you want me to?
Oh, of course, I'd want you to respond if you want to. I don't mean you to take on all the global manufacturing of garments, but if there's any way you'd like to respond, I would, of course, love to hear it.
Sure. So first, just on correcting, as I know I threw a lot of a number at everyone. So currently in P1 and P2, we believe there's around 700,000 square feet of garment manufacturing left and about the same amount, so another 700,000 square feet outside of P1 and P2 around the zoning special districts, 1.4 million total.
May I ask one question about that? You mentioned jewelry also. Is that included in the seven?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so I would personally like to know what the number is without the jewelry because the 47th Street jewelry area is not manufacturing, as I understand it. It's trading, and there is a lot of aggregated square footage, but that's not really.
Yeah, it's not part of the geography of these numbers.
Okay, so just, if there is a statistic.
We can try, yeah, yeah. So I think like the, you know, our team has looked at these issues, staring at this number, has been talked to a lot of people over the last kind of three to four years. And the debate of the responsibility of enforcement versus the responsibility of global changes is one that has, it continues to be thoroughly debated, you know, it's like, well, I mean, you're correct in the sense that like, it was not like a perfect pilot in figuring it out. So we'll never truly know it. I mean, but I just want to note that like the decrease in jobs in garment manufacturing we've seen in the garment district are the same that we've seen across the nation. So there is, like the profoundness of the global changes of how people consume in the United States and where those goods are being consumed and garment being part of like these changes is something that for sure has something to do with the state of the garment district today. It is not just a zoning enforcement issue. So I'm not debating it that that was not an issue. And I know people have a lot of, and rightly so, like, questions about that. But there was something greater than that that happened. And really, like, when we began to look at, like, again, the statistics across the nation and seeing that the decrease was the same in environments where there was no real, real estate pressure on anyone to stop doing garment manufacturing and where rents for manufacturing were very low in other parts of the nation, and we've seen the same type of decline. So, I mean, like, the district was in part the victim of the global economy and the way how we all consume goods differently.
I respect that. Thank you. And I really do appreciate that. I would say that it shouldn't have to be all or very little. And I, and we will never know, but I do think that there was a decision made to allow landlords to take in non-garment companies and that obviously those decisions happened over several administrations. But turning a blind eye led to an increasingly competitive marketplace for garment manufacturers to operate in New York City, particularly in Manhattan.
We can also posit other contrafactuals of would it be a better outcome to have a neighborhood full of empty space?
Right, but I would hope that would have come before us at a certain point rather than making it impossible for it to ever come back in any way. And I say this with experience of being landlord of manufacturers, both in Manhattan previously and in Long Island City. And there are plenty of factors that led to the demise of manufacturing. But this, this didn't, there was no fighting chance once office space was allowed to come in, in this part of town.
I admire your passion for manufacturing.
I do. It's a great part. It's the way immigrants acculturate. It's the way people become great citizens who come from other places with great skills. You all know those things, but.
And actually, a large part of the work that we do is looking towards what are the jobs in today's economy that will provide that same pathway?
And I so appreciate the work of the department and any of you out there working on that, who are doing that. I think the jobs of the future really is the answer, and I hope it will pick up a lot of the lost jobs for garment manufacturing.
Other comments? Yes, Commissioner Levin.
Well, working off of many of the same comments as my colleague, but sort of taking it down several levels to a couple of pragmatic things. I have to say, I agree with Cheryl that I will be very loath to let the current restrictions, flawed though they may be, be relieved until we really have a robust package of incentives in place. So my question is about the prospects for getting any more properties into the IDA program. I think the hope had been that perhaps you might be able to have 300,000 square feet by now, and you've got 200,000. And the community board, I think, would like it to be 500,000. Is the, what are the prospects for driving that number up? And perhaps related to that, what is the fate of the 180,000 square feet that is currently preserved?
Sure, so on the 180,000 square feet, I'll let my colleagues from city planning answer because I have a better sense of the process and the city's approach to it. On IDA, I would say that like what we've been really tasked with and the commitment, the strong commitment we made to the Steering Committee and the elected officials are twofold. One is to create a program that is flexible enough, that it is attractive, at the same time that has like very strong public benefits so that there is no question that the city is using these tax dollars appropriately, which we're talking about a significant amount of money, as well as making sure that the garment manufacturer is know exactly what it is that the property owner is supposed to give to them in exchange for these tax benefits. So that balance of having a program that is attractive, but at the same time that has strong public benefits is, I think, what we've been really thriving for. And we feel, and I think everyone collectively feels comfortable, that the program achieves that. So that already took us like a significant amount of time. And needless to say, because it is mostly a preservation IDA program, was part of a lot of conversations within the city family as to like breaking the mold of IDA to create something that was like specifically trying to target that specific issue in the garment center. Our commitment is to continue to market it aggressively. So we are in touch with a number of property owners, and we'll continue to be in touch with them, to entice them as being part of the IDA. Some property owners do not want to be part of a business transaction with the city, even though they have no intent in changing the way they use their building. It's just like some of them, the barrier to even have a kind of a, to have a government being like looking at their building is an issue. So there are some property owners that will never be able, I just want to be honest, that will never be able to go to. I want to also add, like, because garment manufacturing is not solely located in the preservation areas and the IDA boundary is much wider, we are talking to property owners outside of the preservation areas who, for their own very narrow business decisions, have continued to remain in that business regardless of zoning. So these folks are not going to be, you know, affected at all by the application that's in front of you. Like, they have been ineffective for more than 30 years. So our goal is to continue to aggressively market it, but do it in a way that allows the property owners to make a real fundamental decision entering into a real long-term transaction with the city and also the city to make that same decision regarding our relationship with them. So that's our commitment. We're, we're very happy that we were able to bring 200,000 square feet and three buildings already to the IDA board in less than three months of announcing the program. We think like that's a really strong sign that there is interest, that this program is real and that it will meet its goal. And we'll continue to do that, building by building, property owner by property owner.
Is there any expectation there might be some more people to sign up by the time we get done with Eulor?
I think it is my, our collective strong hopes that some of the conversations we have will lead to maybe term sheets being signed. However, I don't want to be standing on the record saying that we will because it's a tax abatement, it takes two to agree to it. And so these are ongoing conversations.
And the existing, the 180,000 square feet that did get committed to the preservation program, what happens to it?
Dylan will address that in his presentation.
Oh, when we get to the staff, got it, I understand.
Which will immediately follow this.
I misunderstood, got it.
We have to come to talk about the program, and then Dylan will talk about land use and what the actual proposal is before us.
Okay, so then maybe this is, maybe silly, this is an appropriate follow-up or sort of continuing thought on this. So when you think about creating incentives for buildings, building owners to participate, and there is now a framework for what the program provides, how, how did the group, how, how did we get here? The numbers, right? So $35 per square foot, cap to 15 years, $1 tax abatement for the, where did those numbers come from? And what analysis was done in the development of those numbers to maximize the potential participation in the program to ensure as best as we can the success of the overall program?
Sure, so I'm happy to break it down for you. So the first thing was the geography. A large part of the conversation around the Steering Committee is trying to have an understanding of like where the existing ecosystem is located. And as I said, it goes beyond where the preservation areas are drawn. So the Steering Committee felt strongly that if we were to, if the city were to advance with a tax incentive program, we should apply it and make buildings beyond the preservation areas be eligible. So we actually could capture the maximum building as opposed to just the ones that were in the preservation area. So that was like the first point of, I think, like, strong consensus from the group. On the rents, there were, we did a little bit of analysis on understanding what are the average rents for garment manufacturing, average rents for, for office buildings and other types of uses. The rents, very greatly. You have buildings that still charge $16 to $20 square foot for garment manufacturing, some of them outside of the preservation area because they're mainly fashion manufacturers, and so it's passive income from these property owners. And they have long-term tenants, they're not just trying to transition any of their buildings out. You have buildings that are already kind of like, still have a critical mass of garment manufacturers, but have other uses as well. And then within the fashion manufacturing, you have pure manufacturing, and you have other uses that tend to also, like, showrooms, for example, sometimes can pay more than, than office, for example. So $35 square foot was, and was really important that it was gross rent as well. So it was an effective rent of $25 to $30. And then it was really clear that the rent they were paying was encompassing electricity, which sometime can be very expensive for a manufacturer because you have a lot of equipment. So it seemed to encompass most garment manufacturing rents, but be below market compared to office and was something that could leave the test of time because this is a 15-year program. So there will be minimal escalation, like, based on CPI on this rent over time.
And was there any consideration, given the, sort of the age of the building stock, that over the course of a lease term that investment, reinvestment in the buildings would need to be made, which are expenses to the building? And once you reach the cap, what happens? That's on the building owner?
Correct, correct.
Well, then, we can understand why it might be hard to get people to participate, but we keep our fingers crossed.
Commissioner Efron.
Just a few more questions about the IDA part. What happens after the 15 years is one question. Second question is whether this will make companies eligible for other tax benefits that usually, other benefits that usually go with IDA bonds, such as REAP, which is an income tax reduction per manufacturer, if that still exists, and some energy cost savings if they're direct metered. And then my third question is, of the 200,000 square feet that you've gone through, what's the breakdown of owner occupants? Is it mostly manufacturers who own the buildings? Or are these landlords who have a variety of manufacturing tenants? Only because that may help judge what the total universe is of possible IDA interest.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so the program is, is designed for 15 years in the sense that property owners will have to give a 15-year lease and demonstrate that they've given a 15-year lease with the specific terms that I discussed to all of their tenants in order to receive the tax abatement. We've, the Steering Committee, the elected officials, a number of stakeholders have asked the city if property owners on year 15 is still interested in the city giving this tax abatement and continue to meet the same kind of public benefits that are part of the program, would the city be interested? And I think our answer has been yes. So I think we're open to these conversations and to extending the program based on how we're doing in 15 years. Your second question on other tax benefits, this is not something that has been discussed, so I can circle back and see whether or not, like, but it never really was part of the conversation. And then in terms of the 200,000 square feet, it represents three buildings. So they're already beginning to show a different profile. One building is almost entirely garment manufacturing. It's 100,000 square feet of garment manufacturing use. The two other buildings are less than 50% garment manufacturing. So they're already, so two buildings are mixed buildings. One building is almost entirely garment manufacturing.
I actually meant the ownership. Is it owned by a manufacturer who's using this space?
No, these are like, it's three buildings, two property owners, and they are not, they are just property owners, they're landlords.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Cecilia.
Thank you.
And I'll note now that this presentation provided very helpful context, and now we'll turn to what actually is before the commission.
So we'll move on to our agenda. Just for the record, this is the New York City Planning Review Session of Monday, September 24, 2018. The time is 2:33. The first item on the agenda is a pre-hearing review of the Garment Center Tax Amendment in Manhattan, Community Districts 4 and 5. And Dylan Sandler is here to present.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Dylan Sandler. I'm a planner in the Housing, Economic and Infrastructure Planning Division. And a proposed text amendment to the Special Garment Center District was certified on June 11. I assume that the slides are coming, so I'll just keep on going. I'll briefly describe the existing zoning that has evolved over time and the proposed text amendment. And then I'll summarize the votes and recommendations from the community boards and borough president and borough board. And, and then finally, there were some questions when we brought this before the commission in June about the garment ecosystem and the nature of the businesses that are, that are active in the fashion industry and the garment industry. So I just wanted to go into a little bit more detail about the types of businesses and trends that we're seeing. The Special Garment Center District was created in 1987, mostly due to concerns that real estate pressure, in part resulting from the redevelopment of Times Square, would drive out existing garment manufacturing. And so the goal was to preserve garment and apparel production and fashion-related businesses. Within the district, preservation areas were created on side street blocks. The preservation areas restricted existing buildings to industrial, retail, and wholesale showrooms. Office conversions within the preservation areas Office conversions within the preservation areas were permitted only with a chair certification that an equal amount of space was preserved for manufacturing in perpetuity. Along the avenues, the underlying M1-6 zoning applied, which permits commercial office. In 2005, the Special Garment Center District was amended in conjunction with the Hudson Yards rezoning. This amendment divided the preservation areas into two areas, P1 and P2. Within P1, which are the mid-block portions of the district between Broadway and 8th Avenue on the eastern side of the district, the zoning from 1987 remained unchanged. However, in P2, the mid-block area between 8th and 9th Avenues, new commercial and residential construction was now permitted as of right, as were conversions of smaller existing buildings to uses allowed by the underlying zoning, which included commercial and residential. For larger buildings in P2, and larger buildings are defined as those greater than 70,000 square feet, conversions to commercial or residential were permitted only if an equivalent amount of space was preserved for manufacturing in perpetuity. Additionally, at this time in 2005, the northwest block immediately south of the Port Authority Bus Terminal was removed from the district. The proposed text amendment would reinstate the underlying M1-6 zoning in the area that is currently P2, P1, creating what would now be called A1, which includes both the avenues and the mid-block portions between 8th Avenue and Broadway. This would eliminate the manufacturing preservation requirements and allow many existing property owners to, that are currently non-conforming office, to receive proper certificates of occupancy and cure outstanding use violations. We are also proposing some modifications to create bulk envelopes that are more consistent with the existing neighborhood character. The area that is currently P2, located on the side-streets in the west portion of the district, would now be called A2, and the underlying C6-4M Hudson Yards regulations would continue to apply, which includes street wall requirements from Hudson Yards. However, in A2, the existing regulations that restrict office and residential conversions of buildings greater than 70,000 square feet would be modified so that these larger buildings could now be converted to office uses. Residential conversion from these existing large buildings would continue to not be allowed. And across the entire district, we are proposing sign regulations consistent with C6-4 districts, which would reduce the allowable height and size of signs. Within A2, we are also proposing restricting flashing signs, and this is an area that has more residential. And these changes are in response to both the bid, the Garment District Alliance, and the community boards. And the proposed text amendment would also create a City Planning Commission special permit for hotels in the entire district. The text amendment was referred out on June 11th. Community Boards 4 and 5 both voted to disapprove with conditions. Manhattan Borough Board voted to approve with conditions, and the Manhattan Borough President also voted to approve with conditions. Despite the community board's votes to disapprove, in their discussions, they were generally supportive of the broader proposal and are generally enthusiastic about many of the programs being developed to support garment production and the fashion industry. But they do still have some concerns about some of the details of the proposal and the implementation of the programs. The community boards, borough president and borough board, had some recommendations related to the programs being developed to support garment production. These include, related to the IDA program, there are currently 300,000 square feet of space that have been committed to the program. 200,000 square feet of that have already gone through the approval process with IDA. And the community boards generally were hoping for a minimum of 500,000 square feet of preserved space through IDA and the building purchase and other mechanisms. The IDA term is set for 15 years, and there were requests that there be an option for renewing the program after 15 years at the discretion of landlords. And there was a desire for more publicly available data about the leases in the preserved space. The city has committed $20 million for nonprofit to purchase a building to be used as garment production. The community boards were, they requested additional money, additional city capital if this 20 million is not enough to purchase a building or purchase a building that is sizable enough. Because of the Garment Center preservation requirements, there are deed restrictions on 180,000 square feet of space, requiring them to be maintained as manufacturing. The expectation is that, once the zoning changes, these properties would be allowed to remove their deed restrictions. However, the community boards requested that this space continue to be restricted to manufacturing. And I can follow up at the end with more details about this 180,000 square feet of space. And there were also requests for more support for workforce development, especially that the city partner with community organizations to increase job training and job placement. There were also several proposed modifications to the zoning proposal included in these resolutions. These included further restricting illuminated signs in the district and prohibiting flashing signs in A1, the portion on the, in the eastern side of the district, removing the plaza bonus on the mid-block portions in A1 on the eastern side of the district. The plaza bonus has already been removed from the avenues and is not applicable in A2. There were requests that, for larger buildings in A2, they be able to convert the upper floors to residential with inclusionary housing. Related to the hotel special permit, the community boards wanted more detailed parameters to determine if a hotel would meet the findings of the special permit, and were wanting public purpose hotels to also have a special permit. There was a request for an ATEX to grandfather two sites from the hotel special permit and modify zoning to allow hotel above affordable housing. And there was a recommendation to create a cap for building height in the district. So, finally, I just wanted to share a little bit more about our understanding of the types of fashion and apparel businesses that are in the Garment Center and some of the trends that we're seeing in the industry. One of the main things that we've seen is there's been a shift to smaller companies. The average size for garment manufacturing businesses is now 10 employees and about 4,800 square feet, so relatively small companies on average. And many of these do one of two things. They either produce things that are very high-end products, or they facilitate speed. So, they help fashion designers sort of bring things to market very quickly. So, a few examples. The image on the top left, this is a, this is a factory with very modern computerized machinery that does very high-end clothing, mostly women's clothing. And so, these are at sort of a limited to moderate quantity and relatively expensive apparel that are sold, you know, in the U.S. and around the world. The image on the, in the center on the top is a costume designer. They work with Broadway and the city's growing TV and film industry. So, it's really important that they, that they're located in this location and have, you know, good access to the theater, to Broadway. On the top right, this is my favorite. This is a handmade cardboard mold for pleating. This is a legacy, family-owned business that has been in the Garment Center for decades, and they have incredibly skilled artisans and, you know, can produce things that can't be replicated by machinery anywhere in the world. And in recent years, they have struggled to find skilled labor and are really working with a lot of the local academic institutions to try to promote these kinds of, these kinds of trades. On the bottom left, this is a high-end glove maker based in the Garment Center. If you look closely, you can see molds for Nicole Kidman and Uma Thurman's, Thurman's gloves. These gloves start at about $150 and go up to several hundred dollars. So, again, very high-end products. They're more expensive than most of my evening gloves. And on the bottom right is a, an image of a trade show, and these are very common in the industry. So, there are a lot of buyers and sellers that are, that are helping fashion designers have access to the latest, latest patterns, zippers, buttons, trim, and these are a really integral part of the industry. So, then, not showing here are the fashion designers, and this is a huge part of the economy in the city and in this area. There, as of 2015, there were approximately 650 designers in the Garment Center. And these are, you know, these firms also then work with a whole slew of other companies that help bring their designs to market. So, there are a lot of, they're marking and grading, so taking a pattern, figuring out what the different sizes are and how to position those on a piece of fabric to cut them most efficiently. So, there are a lot of, a lot of smaller, smaller businesses that are supporting the fashion companies in the district. And then, as Cecilia was saying, these companies make up approximately half of the, of the business, businesses and employment in the Garment Center. So, beyond these fashion-related businesses, there are, there's a diverse range of nonprofits, tech companies, doctors' offices, architects, and many other kinds of, kinds of businesses. And this is an area that has been growing in employment at a pretty tremendous rate. I think it's 23,000 jobs that have been added in the Garment Center from 2000 to 2016. So, thank you very much. I would be happy to take any questions, including, I can, I can speak to the 180,000 square feet now, or, yeah, okay, I'll just continue with that. So, just jumping back a little bit, this space was, was preserved in order for landlords to then convert an equal amount of space to commercial office. What we know about the space is that approximately a third of it is actually used as garment manufacturing today. So, a little, a little under 60,000 square feet is used as manufacturing. The remainder, at some point in time, was, was converted to, to other uses, presumably office uses. Of that 60,000 square feet, 45,000 square feet has already been committed to the IDA program. So, there's actually, we think it's about 12,000 to 15,000 square feet that is currently manufacturing, that is not in, that is not committed to the IDA program. And our expectation is that this space, that if the zoning text amendment goes through and the manufacturing preservation requirements are lifted, that these landlords would be able to, as a ministerial action, would be able to come in and have those deed restrictions removed. The justification for this is that if the underlying zoning is no longer seen as appropriate, that it doesn't really seem like good policy to hold those landlords to the preservation requirements that were created under, under sort of a past zoning scheme. And sort of furthermore, I think that, you know, it would be, it would almost be penalizing the people that tried to participate in this program while other people converted space to office manufacturing. And presumably, some of these, these spaces were converted and, or were preserved as manufacturing and had manufacturing for some number of years, but then, as the industry declined, it was more difficult to find, to find tenants, and at some point, they did, they did convert those spaces to manufacturing. And there's also a precedent. When the garment, or the manufacturing preservation requirements were lifted as part of rezoning in around 23rd Street in Chelsea, the city went through the same, the same process to allow those landlords to then lift the deed restrictions. So, I'd be happy to expand on that or take other questions.
Yes, Commissioner Arfa.
Just a question about that. Do we know when those applications were made for the preservation in order to have a corresponding amount of square footage made into office space? Because if it was just since the Hudson Yards rezoning, it doesn't seem that long ago, given the length of the lease. So, I'm just trying to understand. I understand not penalizing people unfairly if others are getting a certain value, but if some of that space was already converted to office space within the relatively short period of time that they agreed that they would keep it as manufacturing space, isn't it just acknowledging that they did something that they shouldn't have done rather than penalizing them?
Right.
And then, if another section of it actually is already in the IDA program, they're getting a benefit for something that they already got a benefit for?
Yes. So, there were, there were 10 buildings that had all or portions of the building, or had portions of the building preserved as garment manufacturing. They varied in time, but most of those occurred in the 90s, most of them sort of early to mid 90s. And from what we know is many of them did have garment production for a period of time, and then, at some point, you know, it, I have my list here, but many of them converted around the early 2000s, late 90s to early 2000s. So, it does seem like there was, it wasn't like they preserved the space and then they never had manufacturing. That may have been the case for some, you know, for some portions, but, but it seems as though, as the industry continued to decline over the last few decades, that slowly some of those spaces were no longer maintained as manufacturing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Deloos.
Thanks for the presentation. Can you, can you speak to the recommendation from the community board about developing an ATEX to grandfather the two sites?
So, this was a, there was an anti-demolition provision, there's an anti-demolition provision in this area, and there were some, some tenement buildings that were demolished, and as we understand it, they actually shouldn't have been demolished, and they, the landlords have been trying to figure out how to, how to redevelop the space, and they've been in a little bit of limbo, and I don't know all of, all of the details about this. But the proposal that was being pushed by, from the community boards was to, to allow these buildings to build back the original tenement space as it was on the, on the bottom five floors or so, and, and then build hotel above that. And so, so this would have required a, both a grandfathering of those sites from the hotel special permit, or at least to facilitate them not having to go through the special permit process to grandfather those sites. But it also is, conflicts with the sandwiching regulations that we have in zoning that doesn't allow commercial space above residential space. And so, there would be several modifications to the zoning that would really be counter to a lot of the precedents in our zoning. And so, so this was, this was a project that sort of was, they were looking for a vehicle to try to accomplish some of these goals in the Garment Center Special District, and we really thought that it, if this were moved forward, it would really need to come as an independent action. It didn't seem as appropriate with this text amendment.
I'll just elaborate on that, that this sandwiching rule, the requirement that the residential always be the top floor of the building, is one that is uniform throughout the city. We very occasionally will see in ultra-luxury buildings a desire to have a restaurant on the top floor, and the fact that the suggestion would be that affordable, it's okay for housing to be below a hotel use when it's affordable housing struck the department as particularly Commissioner Arfa.
If I may, were there BSA applications for conversion from manufacturing to office space? Wouldn't that be the normal course that buildings would take if they felt a terrible hardship?
I'm actually not, I'm not aware of whether there were BSA variance applications for that. I, I can speculate that because there was, there was a trend of this illegal nonconformance at some point, that probably would have been seen as unnecessary, but, but in the early years, I just don't know.
Yeah, I feel like a terrible rule follower, keeping, keep bringing up these questions, but it just strikes me that that is the mechanism we have in place. And just the idea of rewarding people for bad behavior seems like a really bad precedent all over New York.
Actually, I mean, I think, I certainly understand that sentiment. One thing I wanted to respond to from a comment that you had for EDC, what we understand is that there actually was, was a considerable effort to enforce the preservation requirements in the early years that this, that the district was created. So, there was a, there was a special enforcement unit, and between the late 80s, between 87 and about 92 or 93, there was really a lot of funding and resources available for enforcement. And what we understand is that the rate of decline of the garment production industry was, was consistent from before 1987, you know, through those five years and then after, which really does lead us to think that these, that while there certainly, you know, it leads us to think that, that these macroeconomic trends were the main driver of that decline in the industry. And at some point, there probably was a more, an explicit or, you know, non-explicit decision to enforce some of those requirements less. I, you know, I can't really speak to, to that, but, but I think that it is the idea that... idea that, that these regulations were, were never enforced is, is really not quite right. And I think there was, there was a considerable attempt, and, and at some point, I think there was a decision, or may have been a decision, to, to not invest as many resources in the enforcement.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes, I'd like to ask about another one of the, I guess it's the community board recommendation. And that has to do with large buildings in A2 and allowing them to convert upper floors to residential, as long as it has inclusionary housing?
Yeah.
Is that an idea that you'd be entertaining? How many buildings are we talking about? Is this a particular?
I, I don't have the numbers in front of me. I think it's, it's a handful of, of buildings. The, so the thinking behind, behind this is that for new construction, you know, this is, the, the idea is to create a mixed commercial residential district. There are, there are three large residential buildings in the area. And, but for new construction, residential is allowed within smaller buildings. But, but the, the fear is that allowing residential or portion of these larger buildings to convert to residential would result in displacement of existing commercial tenants. And, and that even if you, you know, our, our experience in the past has been, once you allow some portion of a building to be residential, it often quickly becomes nearly entirely residential. And, and so the, the, the perspective of the agency had, had been to, in, in order to, to maintain it as a, as a diverse mixed-use district, and in order to avoid displacing existing businesses, that those larger buildings should, should remain as commercial.
It's an interesting, interesting flip of perspective, right? How, how often do you have the agency worrying about displacement and the, and the community pushing for liberalization of the rules? Glad it can work both ways. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, on that note, well, thank you, Dylan.
Thank you.
This will go for a public hearing on Wednesday.
The second item on the agenda, page 75, is a certification of zoning map and zoning text amendments and disposition of city-owned property in the Bronx, Community District Six. Tia Jordan is our presenter.
It'll, it'll come up soon.
Mm-hmm.
There we go.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm here today to walk you through an application that's been made by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development with their co-applicant Proxy Estate Incorporated to seek approval of disposition of publicly-owned, publicly-owned sites at 656 East 176th Street. In addition to that, the co-applicants are seeking a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment for the proposed project area. The actions pursued would facilitate the construction of a new 11-story, 100% affordable housing development comprising approximately 157 housing units. HPD would be disposing of their sites in the project area to Proxy Estate, a Bronx-based real estate development firm. The project site is located in Community District Six, in the center of the Bronx, which is the Tremont Belmont section. Predominant land uses in the area are residential, typified by five-to-nine-story apartment buildings, but includes some smaller two- and three-family residences as well. East Tremont Avenue to the north of the project area is a major east-west commercial corridor and is characterized by one- and two-story commercial buildings with a scattering of taller mixed-use buildings. The three lots that make up the project area are adjacent to residential uses and are currently undeveloped and fenced. They are, the sites are currently used for parking, with the privately-held lot used for public parking and the city-owned lot used for parking by Department of Health and Mental Hygiene employees. The 18 parking spaces on these, on the public lots will be moved to 4223 Third Avenue during construction of the proposed development, and new parking spaces constructed in the new development for the employees. The site where parking would be relocated is on this map to the north of Tremont. Several large parks also surround the development site, including Tremont Park, one block to the west, and Crotone Park, one block to the south. Admiral Farragut Playground is immediately to the east of the site. Here's a closer-in view. The Bergen Municipal Building, located on Arthur Avenue, just north of the development site, project area, houses multiple city agency offices, as well as the offices of Community Board Six. The Department of Health and Mental Hygiene Neighborhood Health Action Center, which provides a wide range of services, is just west of the development site. And these are the employees that currently park on the publicly-owned site lots that are part of this development site. Immediately south of the development site is the Cross Bronx Expressway, which is not at grade in this portion. The area is served by transit with immediate access to several bus lines, and about a quarter of a mile from Tremont Metro North Station, and three-quarters of a mile from the 2 and 5 subway lines at East 174th Street. Seven, several schools are in the area, as well as the Tremont Library. Much of the area surrounding the development site is zoned R7-1. In 2010, East Tremont Avenue was rezoned to C44A and C45X as part of the Third Avenue-Tremont Avenue rezoning undertaken by the Department of City Planning. The intent of that rezoning was to increase development potential along Tremont Avenue, allowing for commercial buildings while incentivizing mixed-income housing development. Here are some photos of the area around the site. On the top left here, photo one, shows where the new, the, the street, where the new building entrance would be located. On photo two, the site is on the left. This would be where cars would enter in the new building. And in photo three, again, the site is on the left, and you can see the character of the surrounding buildings. There would also be a pedestrian entrance on this, on this block. And photo four, you can see the site from Crotone Avenue and East 176th Street. The buildings that you see in the rear of the photo are actually across the Cross Bronx Expressway. They're not directly behind the site. Photo five shows the view of the site, a view from the site across Crotone Avenue. You can see one of the neighboring buildings. And in the final photo, photo six, is a view of the site with the building that would be directly across from it on East 176th Street in the background. Depicted on this slide are the three lots that make up the project area or development site, which are the same for the purposes of this application. The co-applicants are seeking, well, HPD is seeking approval of the city-owned lots here, which they would dispose to the owner of the privately-owned site, Proxy Estate Incorporated. Lot 34 is privately-owned, and lots 65 and 66. In red here are the city-owned lots. The development site is currently zoned M1-4. In 1981 and 1982, the Department of Sanitation pursued site selection, acquisition, and rezoning of this project area in order to facilitate the construction of a new sanitation garage. The project area was at that time rezoned from an R7-1 to the M1-4, but the sanitation garage was never constructed. So the current application would serve to return the development site to residential The co-applicants are seeking a zoning text amendment to designate a mandatory inclusionary housing area, requiring permanently affordable housing be provided in the proposed new development. They are selecting MIH Option 1, which would require that 25% of the residential floor area be provided as housing permanently affordable to households and an average of 60% of the area median income, with 10% at or below 40% of AMI. This is the site plan for the proposed development, which shows pedestrian access planned from, primary pedestrian access planned from East 176th Street, which, if you remember from the site images, does have neighboring residential, residential building frontages. Vehicle access would be from Belmont Avenue, which is a dead-end street. That dead-end street kind of ends at the Cross Bronx Expressway. 19 enclosed onsite accessory parking spaces are planned at this ground floor level. Of those spaces, 18 are being reserved for Department of Health and Mental Hygiene employee use to offset the loss of agency parking spaces due to the disposition of the publicly-owned lots, 65 and 66. The remaining single space would be used by the building superintendent. The actions proposed by HPD and Proxy Estate would potentially facilitate the construction of 157 units of affordable housing in an 11-story residential building. The building, as designed, is comprised of 128,000 square feet and is approximately 113 feet in height. The building would step down from 11 stories to eight, and then five, along Crotone Avenue. The outdoor courtyard that was depicted on the site plan would be located above the parking spaces with access from the building's interior. So that was, that was on the site plan in the rear here. The building would also have a community room, laundry facility, and security systems. Apartments in the building are currently being thought, thought of to rent to individuals and families with incomes between 27 and 80% of AMI, with 10% of units set aside for formerly homeless families and individuals. As the development site is in a transit zone, the proposed development site qualifies for a parking waiver based on the project's income-restricted units. And so if you have any questions, I, I do have the unit mix here, as I thought that might come up as a question, as well as the area median income, which is about $23,000. So I don't know if there are any questions.
Questions from the commission?
Yes, Commissioner Afon. Thank you. Yeah, really, very complete. The parking that will be for the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene does not have access to the building, correct? It's just parking?
There, there would be access, but I would guess for the building superintendent to go in and out.
Okay.
But it's, it's definitely not the primary residential entrance, yes. That's separate.
Okay. All right. And will that be available if there are tenants that want to rent space for parking?
No, there are no parking spaces for building residents.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Oh, yes, Commissioner Marine.
Tia, thank you. Question regarding the parking for the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene Health Center. How many parking spaces do they utilize now in lots 65 and 66?
They say they use all 18 of the spaces.
Oh, so it's only 18?
It's 18 currently, and that's how many are being reconstructed.
That's fine, because I, my question was going to relate to the 4223 Third Avenue parking. I thought maybe something was shifting there.
Only during construction.
Got it, thank you. Is that the, by the way, excuse me, I'm sorry, is that the police?
No, it's a, it's a privately-owned parking lot right now. It's a functioning parking lot, right.
Got it, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, the application is certified.
Thank you.
Item three on the agenda, page number 93, is a certification of a UDAP designation disposition of city-owned property in Manhattan, Community District Three. Matthew Pietrus, I believe, is making his debut presentation here. Commissioner?
Chair, if the record could reflect, I'm recused on this matter.
Good afternoon. This is a housing preservation and development application for UDAP designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned land for two non-contiguous properties in East Village. These actions would facilitate the development of one seven-story building with 10 cooperative units with ground-floor retail, and one six-story building with 11 permanently affordable rental The project area is located in East Village, Community District Three. Both properties are bound by the Avenue A to the east, or the west, East 13th Street to the north, Avenue B to the east, and east under, or, sorry, East 12th Street to the south. Site one is located at 204 Avenue A, and it's within an R7A zoning district with a C25 commercial overlay. An R7A contextual zoning district carries a maximum height of 85 feet and nine stories. Its base FAR is 3.45, but 4.60 with inclusionary housing. Site two is located at 535 East 12th Street and is within an R, R8B district. And an R8B contextual district carries a maximum building height of 75 feet and a maximum FAR of four. The surrounding mid-blocks are mapped R8B, and the north-south corridors are mapped R7A with commercial overlays. The surrounding area is primarily residential with brownstone tile, brownstone-style rowhouses and multifamily buildings. Buildings along the wider corridors tend to be slightly taller and contain ground-floor retail and commercial uses. Most buildings in this area range between four and eight stories. The 80-acre Peter Cooper Village, Stuyvesant Town Development, is located north of 14th Street, north of the project area. The project area is also well-served by open space. Thompson Square Park is to the south. Directly to the east of Site Two is El Sol Briante Jr., which is a community garden. Directly across the street from there is Sawyer Park, and directly to the west of Sawyer Park is El Sol Briante Senior. The East 10th Street Historic District contains 26 rowhouses, and that's a historic district located just north of Thompson Square Park, south of the project area. The city obtained both sites in tax lien foreclosures. In 1976, the city acquired Site Two, and in 1978, the city acquired Site One. In 2001, the project area entered HPD's Tenant Interim Lease Program, which assisted and assists tenant organizations and city-owned buildings to develop self-sufficient low-income cooperatives. However, in 2008, tenants were relocated because of deteriorating conditions in both buildings within the community. And later that year, that project, the project area is also rezoned. Site one was rezoned from an R7-2 to an R7A, the C25 overlay remained. And Site Two was rezoned from an R7-2 to an R8B. Development Site One at 204 Avenue A is a current, is a currently vacant building, rising four stories, and it, it used to contain six residential units and two commercial units, and has about 5,000 gross floor area for an FAR of 2.01. Typical of the neighborhood, the buildings adjacent to the site are multifamily residential walk-ups with ground-floor retail uses. To the north, on the left of the, the slide, is a five-story building, rising 57 feet with eight residential units, and it has ground-floor retail uses. South in the center of the screen is a four-story building, rising 43 feet, that contains six residential units. And all, the buildings along the block range between 36 and 70 feet. Development Site One is proposed to rise seven stories and will be mixed-use. This will contain 10 cooperative units, expected to be sold to former relocated tenants. It rises 68 feet in height with no setbacks. The rear of the building, which isn't shown in the rendering here, will only rise one story, and that will be over the commercial space. The entrance to the residential units will be to the south of the building, and the entrance to the retail will be at the north. Development Site Two is also a vacant building. It's, rises five stories. It contained eight residential units and one commercial unit, and it contained 5,688 gross floor, square feet in gross floor area for a 2.2 FAR. Directly west of the site is a new development in 2000, construction in 2009. It's a multifamily residential building containing 26 units that rises eight stories for a building height of 105 feet. East of the site, in the center of the screen, is the community garden El Sol Briante Jr., which is an NYC Parks Department Green Thumb Community which is an N Y C Parks Department Green Thumb Community Garden. Sawyer Park is directly across the street and was one of nine playgrounds built through the War Memorial Fund. It was a Moses Park. And El Sol Briante Senior is directly west of Sawyer Park, and they have agreed to maintain Sawyer Park's green spaces. Development Site Two will rise six stories and will be 60 feet in height. It will contain 11 one-bedroom affordable units and will have 9,788 square feet. In conclusion, the actions requested will help facilitate development of one seven-story mixed-use building with 10 cooperative residential units and one six-story residential building with 11 affordable units. Happy to take any questions.
Yes, Commissioner Efron.
This is great. I realize they're both too small to be M I H, even though they're currently affordable. Is that through a deed restriction they'll be affordable?
Uh, I'm not sure if it's through a deed restriction.
But it will be afford, in other words?
Oh, will the, will the retail units be through a deed restriction? Will they remain affordable?
Yes. How, how will it remain affordable, considering they're both too small to have M I H designation?
Um, that is something that H P D is currently working out. So the, all, at least for the condo buildings, all of those are expected to be sold to the relocated tenants.
And the other one.
Okay, and the other one. That is still to be worked out with H P D.
I anticipate we'll have a lot more information by the time it comes back.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, another application certified.
Thank you.
And actually, your first application certified. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item four, page number 115, is a certification of a special permit in Manhattan, Community District Two. Our presenter is Sylvia Lee.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application seeking a special permit to modify the use regulations to allow retail beauty parlor use on the second floor, and to modify bulk regulations to allow existing bulk non-compliances to remain in an, in an existing building located at 59 Greenwich Avenue in a C26 district within Greenwich Village Historic District in Manhattan Community District Two. Shown in the photo in the, is the existing currently vacant four-story building, which was built around 1845 as a single-family townhouse. The how, the building most recently contained ground floor retail and three market-rate units above. The project site, 59 Greenwich Avenue, is located on a triangular block where Seventh Avenue, Greenwich Avenue, and Perry Street intersect one another. It is located on the edge of the Greenwich Village neighborhood within the Greenwich Village Historic District. Greenwich Avenue and Seventh Avenue, mapped as C16 and C26 districts, are local commercial corridors with a strong presence of retail stores, bars and restaurants, and local services that complement the surrounding residential neighborhoods and contribute to the active street life. Retail and other commercial uses are permitted as a rate, although limited to the ground floor. The area west of Seventh Avenue is the heart of the village, which is Zone R6, and is predominantly residential in character, interspersed with pre-existing commercial activities, especially eating and drinking establishments on the ground floor in some of the buildings. On the project floor, uh, on the project block, there are four buildings, including the project site. The middle building in photo one on this slide is the project site. To the north of the project site, at 61 Greenwich Avenue, which is the gray building, to the right of the project site in photo one, is a four-story, uh, New York City Transit MTA subway ventilation facility. To the south of the project site is a four-story mixed-use building occupied by a restaurant on the ground floor and residential uses above. And the lot at the corner of Perry Street and Seventh Avenue, shown in the bottom photo, is occupied by a two-story commercial building containing a restaurant. Buildings immediately, immediately across the street from the project site, shown on the top right photo, are three-to-five-story residential buildings with ground floor retail. Greenwich Lane, the new Rudin Development, is located across the street on the block bounded by Seventh Avenue, Sixth Avenue, West 12th Street, and West, uh, West 11th Street, shown kind of, um, on the far right of the top right photo. The zoning lot of the project site measures approximately 1,400 square feet and has a 23-foot frontage on the west side of Greenwich Avenue. The building has an existing non-compliance with regard to rear-facing legally required windows on the second, third, and fourth stories. The distance between the existing rear-facing windows and the rear lot line ranges approximately from 14 to a little over 18 feet, under the required 20 feet. So here are some photos of the existing rear of the building. The applicant proposes to occupy the first and second floors with a use group six hair salon except, establishment. The first floor is allowed commercial use as a right and will contain hair product sales accessory to the primary salon use on the second floor, highlighted in red here. In conjunction, the applicant also proposes an as-of-right extension of the cellar level and first story to the rear lot line and a terrace at the second story, um, which is above the roof of the first story enlargement, as a waiting area for salon customers connected to the proposed salon use on the second floor, also shown on the proposed second floor plan on this slide. Separately, due to structural issues, the applicant proposes to reconstruct over 75% of the existing building, including the rear exterior walls, as part of its restoration and rehabilitation efforts. Accordingly, a bulk waiver on the second, third, and fourth stories is necessary to facilitate the rebuild of the existing building to its current configuration. Notwithstanding changes to interior partitions and exits, the two dwelling units on the third and fourth stories will generally remain the same and will be owner-occupied. In sum, to facilitate the proposed development, the applicant is seeking the grant of a special permit pursuant to Section 74711 of the zoning resolution, the Landmark Preservation Special Permit, to modify use regulations to allow use group six on the second floor and associated terraces, and modify the bulk regulations to allow the rear yard shallower than 20 feet to facilitate the reconstruction of the building's rear exterior walls. And the proposal has received the necessary approvals by the L P C, and the entire building would be gut renovated and restored. A continuing maintenance plan would also be established to ensure preservation of the building in perpetu, perpetuity. The applicant's discussion of conditions and statement findings are included in your packages. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner 11.
Sylvia, do you happen to know, is there any other second-floor commercial use in the area? Um, is this a, is there precedent for this?
Well, the building actually, um, that is opposite, it's on Seventh Avenue, the two-story commercial building, um, ha, as a restaurant occupying both floors, it's on the same block of the...
Elephant and Castle, or the one?
Yes, so...
No, Elephant and Castle is just one.
The building, the one's on Seventh Avenue, yeah. The one, the, the building showing on the...
On, on the avenue.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that building faces the rear, the rear of this restaurant faces the rear of the project site. And the applicant did look into buildings in the surrounding area that also contain second-floor retail. They can speak to it, the public here.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner, please.
I, I will say, second-floor retail is generally more affordable than, than first-floor retail, so it's, um, you know, could be a good thing. One question on the rear of the building, there seems to be a ventilation shaft coming out of the second floor. I'm wondering if there is a commercial kitchen in that space, or what, um, you know, what's happening there now, because it's supposed to be residential.
Right, so the building has been vacant for a number of years, at least since the, when the applicant acquired the building, um, and it previously was occupied, as far as I know, as a residential unit.
It might just be their kitchen.
Yeah, but we can ask the applicant to look into it.
Okay, as part of the L P C review, I mean, I know this is the rear, but, and I, you know, I see the rendering, will that be removed, or?
Right, so the, there are some renovations proposed and approved by L P C, so on the second floor, as part of, uh, the rear exterior reconstruction and, um, the, and also the creation of the terrace on the rooftop of the, um, the first-floor enlargement, there will be new, like, French doors created, um, that would open to, um...
But we don't know if they'll remain a, a ventilation shaft there.
Not, not sure it's necessary for a hair salon, um, establishment, but we can, yeah, ask the applicant to respond to that.
Other question? Yes, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Sylvia, the, on the section, I guess it's slide seven in our handout, where it proposes on the, the third and fourth floor, the residential uses?
Right, so the...
Are those floor-through, or?
Uh, there will be two units, separate units, um...
Okay, so the two spaces in the rear?
Sorry?
The two spaces in the rear?
Right.
The building, what, uh, at the, on the third and fourth level?
Oh, I think this is a, an issue with where the draw, the, the section through the building is, is cut. It's one unit per floor. I think it's just, the section was taken across the court, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, the application is certified.
Thank you.
Item five, page number 149, is a certification of a site selection and acquisition in Manhattan, Community District Ten. Joseph Hennekenz is our presenter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So this is an application for site selection and acquisition of two parcels in Central Harlem, Manhattan, Community District Ten. Approval of the actions would facilitate the preservation of the Joseph Daniel Wilson Memorial Community Garden, which is also known as J D Wilson. The co-applicants of the project are the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Citywide Administrative Services. So the acquisition site is comprised of two privately-owned tax lots on the north side of West 122nd Street. You can see them in red. That's Block 1928, Lots 121 and 122. These lots are interspersed with two publicly-owned lots, lots 22 and 23, which are already owned by Parks. All four of the lots, both publicly and privately owned, are used, are, uh, as one contiguous garden space currently. And the garden was first established in 1985, and it originally encompassed actually nine vacant lots owned by either absentee landlords or the city. But over time, portions of the garden, of the original garden have been redeveloped, and today it comprises those four lots. So the garden is located on the north side of the street, between Adam Clayton Powell Boulevard to the east and Frederick Douglass Boulevard and St. Nicholas Avenue to the west. The site is Zoned R7A, which is a mid-density contextual district with a maximum residential F A R of four. And the block is primarily residential, with a mix of three-to-four-story brownstones and five-to-seven-story multifamily buildings. The garden is adjacent to the west with a four-story residential building, and to the east, there is a construction site where eventually there'll be a seven-story residential Our little green anchor, which is another community garden, is located further down the block. The Washington Apartments, which is a historic landmark, is located across the street. And then Morningside Park is located about three, two blocks west of the site, and Marcus Garby Park is located two blocks east. So the, the city-owned portion of the garden is operated by a nonprofit group called Project Harmony pursuant to a Green Thumb agreement with Parks. The garden is subject to certain requirements under this agreement, including being open to the public for at least 20 hours, uh, a week, and allowing residents to join on a first-come, first-served basis. The garden contains planting beds, a seating area, beehives, a chicken coop, and a shed, which you can see on the right. And Project Harmony also operates a sliding scale C S A at the garden. It hosts visiting artists, manages a feral cat colony, and holds a number of annual events. So while the garden is operated as one contiguous space, as I mentioned, ownership is divided between Parks and a private landowner. Negotiations between the gardeners, the private landowner, and the city have been ongoing since the 1990s and have been contentious at times. In 2017, the private owner announced his intention to sell the lots and to fence off portions of the garden prior to the sale. This spurred the borough president and Parks to renew their effort to negotiate a resolution, and the parties have now reached a tentative agreement for acquisition of the properties at a fair market price. So accordingly, the applicant is now seeking site selection and acquisition approval for the site. Approval would help facilitate the acquisition of the property for continuing use as a garden, helping to preserve the garden as a community open space and neighborhood amenity. So I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Did you say catcalling?
Uh, yes, I did. Apparently, there's a number of, of feral cats.
Feral cats.
Yeah, but it, it was apparently the only proven method for dealing with rat populations.
Other questions for Joseph? Thank you. It's a certified.
Item six, page 173, is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Queens, Community District Six. Nolan Gray will be making his first presentation here to the City Planning Commission.
Hi, good afternoon. I'll be talking today about, um, the former Parkway Hospital proposal. This is a private application by Auberge LLC requesting a zoning map change and a zoning text amendment to facilitate the redevelopment of the former Parkway Hospital site. The rezoning area is located in central Queens in Community District Six, right along the Grand Central Parkway, just north of Queens Boulevard. The prevailing land development pattern in this area is six-to-10-story multifamily buildings along Queens Boulevard, tapering off as it moves north near the rezoning area into a single-family neighborhood. This is the Forest Hills neighborhood. The transition sort of features here can be best seen through the existing land uses. So the site itself, the rezoning area is in an existing R12A zone. This was rezoned in 2009 as part of the Cord Meyer rezoning from R1, R12, excuse me. The site itself is a block to the east from an R71 zone, which is predominantly pre-war multifamily, again ranging from six to 10 stories, and it's a few blocks north of an R6 zone with a similar pattern of development. The rezoning area is, as I mentioned, is in a kind of transition zone. There are a number of, um, uh, community facility uses in the area, including, uh, P S 196, the Grand Central Parkway School, as well as the Toro School of Law, a number of churches. So here is, um, the site looking east from the Grand Central Parkway, to give you a sense of scale. The rezoning area is in red, and the proposed development site is in orange. This is along 113th Street. It's a through lot. Some developments to notice here is, uh, there are a number of slightly taller, non, uh, non-compliant buildings along the Grand Central Parkway, including a, uh, another senior residential facility to the south, which is to the left in this image, which is 10 stories, the Atrea facility, as well as a, um, a six-story medical office building directly to the north of the site. The former Parkway Hospital was built in 1963, and so here you can see pictures from 113th Street of the site. The hospital went bankrupt in 2008. It's been vacant since and is in a dilapidated state at present. Here is the proposed development site again. This is the former Parkway Hospital, but viewed from the Grand Central Parkway Service Road, looking west. You can see that this back half of the site is a, is a paved but undeveloped service parking lot, as well as loading zone. And the image on the left here, you can see the pre-war multifamily building that's being incorporated into this rezoning is both non-conforming and, and non-compliant at, at present. It's a six-story multifamily building built in 1940. And to the right, you can see some of the community facilities indicative of the area. Here you have a church that's immediately across the corner along 113th Street and 70th Road. Here's a site plan of the proposed development. This is oriented toward the east, so at the top, you can see a proposed 14-story residential building, which would go on the eastern edge of the eastern half of the lot. This would be, um, along the Grand Central Parkway Service Road, and you can see parking for the full redevelopment would be along the Grand Central Parkway Service Road there in the top. there in the top right corner of the site plan. The proposal also incorporates rehabilitation and expansion of the existing former Parkway Hospital from six stories to eight stories. The proposal as a whole would incorporate 351 new units, as well as 180 accessible parking spaces. Some more details on the proposed development. The new 14-story building would host approximately 216 market-rate units. The former Parkway Hospital, to the west or to the bottom in this site plan, would host 135 affordable units, including 68 affordable independent residences for seniors. This building would also incorporate approximately 4,000 square feet of community facility space, which the applicant, in conversation with the agency and members of the community, has agreed to try to host an ambulatory facility. So as I mentioned, there's no existing medical office space in this building. It's been vacant for a decade, but the hope is to bring some of that back into the development. Here's a section diagram of the proposed development, just to give you a sense of the expansion and the scale. So on the left, which would be to the east along 113th Street, you can see the existing former Parkway Hospital with the two-story expansion. There would be a setback at the sixth story. And on the right, you can see the proposed residential building rising to 14 stories with a setback at the 10th story. The height difference is mediated by a few factors and was a consideration in reviewing this application. The first consideration was the significant grade change on the site. There's a grade change of approximately 19 feet as you move east toward the Grand Central Parkway Service Road. Second consideration was the development pattern in the area. So we mentioned that there are a few taller buildings along the parkway, and the 14-story building, to some extent, is buffered from some of the lower density uses. And then the third was, of course, the Grand Central Parkway is quite a bit wider than 113th Street. So here's a rendering of the proposed development. This is the former Parkway Hospital building. And as I mentioned, the plan is to rehabilitate the building. There'd be no demolition, just rehabilitation and a two-story enlargement. Important to notice here, and again, we're looking from 113th Street, the entrance to the residences is in the middle, and then the proposed community facility entrance would be to the right of this image. Here is the proposed new residential building along the Grand Central Parkway Service Road. Important to note here, the parking for the facilities would be to the far left here. You can see the van, as well as the entryway for the residences. You can see a setback beginning at the 10th floor. So to facilitate this proposed development, the applicant has proposed a zoning map change, a section of R-12A incorporating the pre-war multifamily building across the street from 113th Street, as well as the portion of the former Parkway Hospital lot, which includes the former Parkway Hospital building. The applicant proposes to rezone that to R-7A. The considerations in including the multifamily building across the street were to treat like building alike. The multifamily building across the street is similar in scale to the former Parkway Hospital building, although both are currently zoned R-12A. The eastern half of the site would be, is proposed to be rezoned R-7X, which would accommodate a slightly larger-scale new building along the Grand Central Parkway Service Road. In addition to this map change, the applicant proposes to map a new, or to include a text amendment, which would map a new MIH area. And this would incorporate Option 1, which would mean 25% of residential floor area for 60% AMI. Option 2, which would entail 30% of residential floor area for 80% AMI. And the workforce option, which would require 30% of floor area for 115 AMI, as well as considerations for 70% and 90% AMI. And the applicant proposes to fulfill this obligation using, in part, the heirs' units. So look forward to your questions.
Yes, Commissioner Marine.
Thank you, Nolan, for your presentation. One of the observations that I made while reading the materials was that we're going to be mapping an MIH area. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I'm a little bit confused as to the separation of affordable units, including the heirs, and the market-rate units in two separate buildings. Aren't they supposed to be in the same building?
So we double-checked with council, and they can be on two separate buildings if they're on the same zoning lot.
Thank you.
I'm glad that I wasn't the only one who needed that primer on it.
It really struck out at me when I'm reading the materials, and I just had to ask. Thank you.
Commissioner Ephron.
Yes. Is there a height limit with the R-7X?
I have it written down, but I'd have to double-check. I'm sorry.
There is. It has gone up since I last knew it, but it used to be 125.
I think, in fact, it was in one of our earlier applications.
But I think it's... We'll get the exact height.
And the reason I ask is whether ultimately that will be a taller, skinnier building or if that will stay that height. Is that anywhere, the 14 stories, anywhere near the height?
Yes. I believe that that is...
Thank you.
It is...
Thank you.
You know the answer to this question. Go to the microphone.
Hello. Alexis Wheeler, Deputy Director for the Queens Office. The maximum height for R-7X is 145 feet with a qualifying ground floor, 140 without a qualifying ground floor, and a 14-story maximum limit.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Levin.
Just following up on Commissioner Marine's question. Aren't these buildings on two separate zoning lots? You've got one on the R-7X and one on the R-7A?
It'd be a single zoning lot.
A single zoning lot with a split zoning district.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions? Okay. I will note that this is the first MIH application that we've seen in this corner of Queens. And the application is certified.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 7, Page 201, is a certification of a UDAP designation and disposition of city-owned property in Brooklyn, Community District 4. Sarah Plattkin is our presenter.
Good afternoon.
Excuse me. I am recused from this item.
Good afternoon. This is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, HPD, to request the designation and approval of an urban development action area and disposition of a city-owned site. This application will facilitate the development of a new four-story building with 20 100% affordable units at 63 Stockholm Street in Bushwick, Brooklyn, Community District 4. The project is located in Bushwick, Brooklyn, Community District 4. It is located at 63 Stockholm Street between Evergreen and Central Avenues. The surrounding area falls within an R-6 zoning district and consists primarily of low- and medium-density residential buildings with a mix of two-to-three-story rowhouses and four-story multifamily apartment buildings. R-6 Quality Housing Zoning Regulations on narrow streets permit a maximum of 2.2 FAR for residential uses, a maximum height of 55 feet, and a maximum base height of 45 feet. C-23 commercial overlays are mapped along Myrtle Avenue and active commercial corridor one block north of the project site. C-23 commercial overlays permit a maximum commercial FAR of 2.0. The surrounding area also includes commercial uses, community facilities, and parking facilities. Nearby commercial uses, including a mix of local retail and auto repair uses, are concentrated along Central Avenue, one block north of the project area, and Myrtle Avenue, two blocks west of the project area. There are several institutional uses in the surrounding area, such as the Stockholm Family Shelter, the Bushwick Leaders Public High School, the DeKalb Senior Residence, and the Buena Vida Continuing Care Facility. The surrounding area also includes the No Wastelands Garden, a community garden with a youth composting program, and a New York City Police Department parking facility currently used by the Bushwick Police Precinct. The surrounding area is well-served by public transportation, including the elevated M subway line, which runs along Myrtle Avenue, with the closest station at Central Avenue and Hart Street, three blocks west of the development site. The area is also served by the B-38 and B-54 buses. The development site is an approximately 7,500-square-foot vacant interior lot owned by the City of New York on the west side of Stockholm Street, a narrow street between Central and Evergreen Avenues. It has approximately 75 feet of frontage on Stockholm Street and is 100 feet deep. The site has a curb cut fronting Stockholm Street and is bordered on either side by two-story residential buildings. The proposed development will include 20 units, a mix of Studio 1 and two-bedroom apartments totaling approximately 16,400 square feet of residential floor area at 2.2 FAR. The proposed development will participate in the Enterprise Green Communities Program and Energy Conservation Program, and will include amenities such as bicycle parking, a laundry room, and backyard access. Pursuant to ZR 225-251, accessory off-street parking is not required for income-restricted housing units in the transit zone and therefore will not be included in this project. The proposed four-story building will have a total height of approximately 40 feet and will be set back 10 feet from the lot line, allowing for landscaping and a continuous street wall with the adjacent buildings. The landscaping will serve as a buffer between ground-floor residential units facing the street and pedestrians. As seen in the site plan, the residential entrance of the building, as well as the additional service entrances to the cellar, will be located on Stockholm Street. The first floor includes five apartments, a laundry room, and access to the planted rear yard for all tenants. Typical floors will include five apartments. In conclusion, HPD is requesting a UDAP designation, project approval, and disposition of a city-owned site to facilitate the development of a new four-story 100% affordable building with 20 units at 63 Stockholm Street, Community District 4, Brooklyn. The development site will be conveyed to the Bushwick Alliance, a joint venture between Riseborough Community Partnership and St. Nick's Alliance, developers selected through an HPD RFQ process. This concludes my presentation. I am available to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay. The application is certified.
Moving on to Item 8, Page 220, is a certification of zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn, Community District 6. Katie Ferrera Eunido is our presenter.
Good afternoon. This is a private application for a zoning map amendment to rezone an M-11 area to R-7A C-24 and to map the rezoned lots as a mandatory inclusionary housing area. The action would facilitate redevelopment of part of the rezoning area to residential building. The proposed project site is within the Columbia Street waterfront neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District 6. And the area surrounding the proposed project is characterized by a variety of land uses, including single- and multifamily residential, mixed-use, light industrial, and open space. The block and areas to the north and east of the site are predominantly residential, including attached townhouses, as well as new apartment buildings. And Columbia Street, which is to the east of the site, has a more commercial character with ground-floor retail and office space. Blocks to the south and west are more light industrial and auto-related facilities, mixed with some two-to-four-story homes that are non-conforming in the M-11 zoning district. There are several community gardens and parks in the neighborhood, including the lots at the intersection of Hamilton Avenue and Van Brunt Street, adjacent to the project site, which are city-owned and under Parks jurisdiction. The project area is located more than one-half mile from the F&amp;G subway lines, however, the B-61 bus serves Columbia Street between Red Hook and downtown Brooklyn. And there's multiple regional roadways in the area, including the BQE and the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel entrance there. The site is currently mapped M-11, and it's bordered on the east by R-6B zoning. There have been several actions over the past decade to bring existing residential and commercial uses in this area into conformance and to facilitate residential and mixed-use development. Those actions include the Columbia Street and Carroll Gardens rezoning of 2009, which maps contextual districts across 86 blocks in this area and to additional R-6B extensions, both on Carroll Street in 2011. And the commission will recall a recent application for the contextual rezoning at 55-63 Summit Street, just down the street. That axon was voted favorably by the commission in July 2018 and by city council this month. The proposed rezoning area in this application consists of three tax blocks totaling, pardon me, three tax lots totaling approximately 10,500 square feet. The proposed development site at 41 Summit Street is a single tax lot in red there, which is owned by the applicant. There's a two-story building on that lot that was formerly used as a warehouse and is currently unoccupied. The other two lots included in the proposed rezoning are 75 and 79 Hamilton Avenue. They currently include one three-story mixed-use building with a vacant commercial ground floor and one two-story building that has a commercial bank and parking. The applicant worked with DCP to determine an appropriate rezoning boundary that includes the two non-applicant-controlled lots. Here are some photos facing the proposed rezoning area. You can see the bank in the lower picture there, as well as the mixed-use building above it. And the two-story brick building with a large garage door is the applicant's property of 41 Summit Street. And some photos from around the project area. There's the Harold Ickes Park area, which is across the street from the project site, and also Summit Street and Hamilton Avenue there. The applicant's proposing to develop a seven-story residential building of seven units and approximately 10,000 square feet. The building will be built to the lot line up to a height of no more than 65 feet. That height would be limited under the proposed R-7A district due to the zoning resolutions transition rule because the site is within 25 feet of an R-6B district. The development would include a 39-foot rear yard, and no on-site parking is proposed. The application proposes to map MIH Options 1 and 2 across the proposed rezoning area. However, due to the limited dimensions of the applicant's lot and the building height limit under the transition rule, the applicant has found it infeasible to construct the 12,500-square-foot threshold for applying MIH to its proposed development. And just to show a rendering of the applicant's proposal. And to facilitate the proposed development, the applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to rezone this M-11 area to an R-7A C-24 and to designate the rezoned lots as a mandatory inclusionary housing area. I'd be happy to take any questions. Thanks.
Commissioner Ephron.
Thanks. I understand this one's too small to be MIH by just a little bit. But the other location presumably could be rebuilt.
Yes.
There are two other sites within, two other building lots.
Two adjacent lots.
Sorry. Two adjacent lots with different owners. And those would be subject to MIH at full build-out of the zoning. I just don't know the width of those. I'm just trying to ascertain whether they would be above 12,000 feet.
One lot, I could, I'd have to pull up the exact square footages, but one lot is quite substantial. Let me pull this up here. There you go. So I'm not sure if you can see the lot line. One lot is a similar size. That's 75 Hamilton Avenue. That's where the three-story building is. The bank lot takes up the bulk of the rezoning area and would presumably be buildable up to an MIH threshold.
So one wouldn't necessarily, and one would?
Potentially, yes.
The one thing that I will note while we have this slide up here is that the development site itself is a small portion of the rezoning area and that the department, were the additional areas not included, we would not be recommending that the application go forward. If it were just what is in red, we would view it as a spot zoning and that it makes far more sense, for rational land use reasons, to rezone the entire area. Commissioner Levin.
Well, consistent with rational land use reasons, it won't surprise you to hear my question, which is, why shouldn't this be rezoned to an R-6B to be consistent with the rest of the residential zoning district? The rest of the portion of the block that is residential?
So this, there was consideration of a variety of potential rezonings by the applicant, districts by the applicant. And this, the position of these lots has the potential for additional density because it does front in part on a wide street. It's across the street from large open space. And so with consideration to that, it has kind of a gateway and corner function despite not being technically a corner lot is among their rationale.
We'll talk further at the hearing.
Other questions? Okay, then it's certified.
Thank you.
Item number nine, Page 239, is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendments and special permits in Brooklyn, Community District 2. Our presenter is Anan Aman.
Afternoon, commissioners. This is an 809 Atlantic Avenue rezoning. This is an application by Hope Street Capital seeking a zoning map amendment, zoning text amendment, and two special permits. Together, these applications would facilitate a new approximately 237,000-square-foot mixed-use development with residential apartments, office space... development with residential apartments, office space, and retail at 809 Atlantic Avenue, and would facilitate the restoration of the individual landmark Church of St. Luke and St. Matthew in Fort Greene, Community District 2. The proposed project area is located on Atlantic Avenue at the nexus of four neighborhoods, Fort Greene and Clinton Hill to the north and east, Prospect Heights to the south, and Vanderbilt Avenue to the west. The proposed project area seen in red is located on the southern portion of a block bounded by Fulton Street to the north, Clinton Avenue to the east, Atlantic Avenue to the south, and Vanderbilt Avenue to the west. The residential neighborhoods of Fort Greene and Clinton Hill are characterized by three-to-five story brownstones and six-to-10 story apartment buildings and community facilities. To the southeast along Atlantic Avenue are predominantly auto-related uses and retail, and to the southwest is a 22-acre mixed-use Pacific Park development, which includes a Barclays Center, and one complete would include 16 buildings for residential and commercial uses. To the west is 470 Vanderbilt, an approximately 900,000-square-foot mixed-use full-block development that includes a adaptably reused lot building for office use and a new residential development with ground-floor retail. Further west in downtown Brooklyn is the Atlantic Terminal Transit and Retail Hub. The area is well-served by transit with the sea line stopping one block from the site and 11 subway lines and the regional Long Island Railroad located at Atlantic Terminal. Additionally, there are several bus lines running along Fulton Street, Atlantic Avenue, and Vanderbilt Avenue. The proposed project area is mapped with R7A and R6B zoning districts and includes a C24 overlay along Fulton Street and Atlantic Avenue. R7A and R6B districts are medium-density contextual districts that allow between 3 to 4 FAR and generally result in high lot coverage buildings that reach between 6 to 9 stories. The base sites are between 30 to 75 feet, depending on the width of the street. The C24 overlay allows up to 2 FAR for commercial uses. The R7A district is also within an inclusionary housing designated area, which provides a maximum, a higher maximum FAR in height for participating in the inclusionary housing The proposed project area includes several overlapping boundaries, including the development site, a zoning lot, and rezoning boundaries. The proposed development site is an L-shaped site on Atlantic Avenue between Vanderbilt Avenue and Clinton Avenues. The site is approximately 21,000 square feet and consists of two tax lots. Lot 1 is an 8,500-square-foot lot and is improved with two one-story car wash buildings with reservoir space for 10 automobiles. These existing, these existing structures contain approximately 2,900 square feet and are built to 0.34 FAR. Lot 59 is a 12,500-square-foot lot on Clinton Avenue and Atlantic Avenue and is improved with a one-story building consisting of auto-related uses and a bar/restaurant. This building contains approximately 11,000 square feet and is built to 0.87 FAR. The development site is mapped entirely as the previously described R7A zoning district with a C24 overlay and is within the inclusionary housing designated area. Furthermore, to facilitate the proposed development, the applicants would be merging the development site with lots 5, 7, 8, 10, and 51 to create a single zoning lot that would allow for the transfer of development rights. The zoning lot is outlined here in blue. Lot 10 is an approximately 27,000-square-foot through lot with frontages on Clinton Avenue and Vanderbilt Avenue and is improved with the landmark church of St. Luke and St. Matthew. The church was designated in 1981 and would be restored as part of the proposed development. Lots 5, 7, 8, and 51 are each approximately 3,500 square feet and improved with residential uses ranging from four to seven stories and includes condominium apartments. The development site in red would receive up to 70,000 square feet of development rights from the landmark church and the aforementioned lots. There would be no zoning changes to the transfer sites. The proposed rezoning is limited to the southern portion of the block, highlighted here in yellow. It would include the development site outlined in red and portions of lot 53, 56, 57, and 58. As shown in the images, these lots are all improved with three-story residential buildings built less to 3.0 FAR. Taking a closer look at the rezoning boundary, there are two rezonings to maintain a rational boundary. The development site lots 1 and 59, along with small rear portions of lots 53, 56, 57, and 59, would be rezoned to an R9-C25, seen here in the dark yellow. Additionally, portions of lot 57 and 58 would be rezoned to R6A to be consistent with the existing three-story context on those sites and to maintain a rational rezoning action. This is highlighted in the light yellow. The applicants are proposing a new 29-story, 237,000-square-foot mixed-use development with 203,000, 203,000 square feet of residential floor area, including approximately 40,600 square feet of permanently affordable floor area and 34,000 square feet of commercial floor area. The proposed development would have a podium with two floors of commercial use, ground-floor retail, and a second floor of office space. The commercial entrances would be along all three frontages, and the residential entrances would be along Clinton Avenue and Vanderbilt Avenue. No loading berth or off-street parking would be included. The proposed rezoning generates 135,500 square feet of residential floor area, of which approximately 40,600 square feet would be permanently affordable pursuant to option 2 of the mandatory inclusionary housing program. The development rights from the transfer sites would not include an affordable component because these sites are not seeking any zoning changes. As part of the proposed 74-711 special permit, the Landmarks Preservation Commission must issue a report in support of the proposed bulk modifications and the transfer of the development rights from the landmark church. In their, in their review of the proposal, LPC advised the applicants to ensure the view of the belfry of the church would maintain visibility from this perspective, looking north on Vanderbilt Avenue. As a result of their recommendation, the applicants limited the height of the podium to four stories and shifted the bulk of the tower to the corner of Vanderbilt Avenue and Atlantic Avenue. In order to facilitate the proposed project, the applicants are requesting a zoning map amendment to rezone an R9, to an R9-C25 and R6A districts, a zoning text amendment to designate a new MIH area, and two special permits to modify bulk and parking requirements. The applicants are proposing to rezone an R7A-C24, R7A, and R6A districts to an R9 district with a C25 commercial overlay. The R9-C25 would permit up to a maximum of eight FAR for residential and community facility uses within an MIH area and up to two FAR for commercial use. The applicants are also proposing to rezone small portions of the rezoning area that are not part of the development site, from an R7A-C24 district to an R6A district, to be consistent with the built context on those sites. The R6A district would permit up to a maximum of three FAR for residential and community facility uses and would not allow commercial use. The applicants are also proposing to designate a new MIH area within FNF with option 2, requiring 30% affordable housing at an average AMI of 80%. Additionally, in order to facilitate the proposed development, the applicants are requesting the grant of a 74-711 special permit, which would allow the CPC to modify bulk regulations except for floor area for zoning lots containing a landmark designated, containing a landmark designated by LPC in order to further the preservation of such buildings. Pursuant to 74-711, LPC must issue a report stating that the proposed bulk waivers relate harmoniously to the landmark and that a program has been established for continuing maintenance that would result in the preservation of the designated landmark. LPC has issued that report and supports the restoration of the landmark church of St. Luke and St. Matthew and the proposed bulk waivers. The applicants are requesting a waiver to the transfer of floor area provisions of 7702 and 7722 to facilitate the transfer of up to 70,000 square feet of development rights across district boundaries to the development site. The applicants are requesting a waiver to the tower and base regulations that require a certain percentage of floor area in the base of the envelope and a minimum street wall height. As discussed earlier, the visibility of the belfry was important to the LPC, which lowered the street wall to below 60, below the 60-foot requirement and decreased the minimum percentage below the 58, below the 58% requirement. These waivers would facilitate a development that is more respectful of and relates more harmoniously to the landmark church. The applicants are requesting a waiver to the inner court and inner court recess provisions. Due to the irregular site configuration, the applicants are seeking a waiver of an inner court at a dimension of 17 feet, 7 inches on the residential, residential floors 3 and 4. This dimension is less than the 30-foot requirement. Furthermore, the width of the inner court recesses shown here in red do not meet the width-to-depth ratio stipulated for R9 districts. The applicants are requesting a waiver to the commercial and residential rear yard requirements. There is no commercial yard requirement for the ground floor, but the second floor requires 30 feet. The applicants are seeking this waiver because providing a 30-foot rear yard would leave the floor plate at a depth of only 50 feet, which isn't viable for efficient office use. The residential rear yard requirement for this site is 25 feet. Similar to the commercial rear yard, providing a 25-foot rear yard for residential use would leave the floor plate at only 55 feet, making a double-loaded corridor impractical. The applicants are proposing a 16-foot residential rear yard. The applicants are requesting a waiver to winded lot line requirements, which stipulate a minimum of 30 feet between any legally required windows and any rear or side lot line. As mentioned previously, providing the minimum 25 or 30 feet would make a double-loaded corridor impractical. Therefore, the applicants are seeking this waiver that would allow a 16-foot distance between legal windows and the rear lot line. Lastly, the applicants are requesting a waiver to the lot coverage regulations for tower and a base buildings within R9 districts, which permit a maximum of 70% coverage on the tower portion. The proposed development's lot coverage would be 71.3%, 1.3% higher than permitted. The applicants are seeking this minor waiver to facilitate the proposed design, which was approved by the LPC. Additionally, in order to facilitate the proposed development, the applicants are requesting the grant of a 74-533 special permit, which would allow the CPC to modify parking regulations for developments with at least 20% income-restricted housing. The applicants are requesting a full waiver to the parking requirement for market rate units for the proposed development. Together, these applications would facilitate a new approximately 237,000-square-foot mixed-use development with residential apartments, office space, and retail use at 809 Atlantic Avenue, and facilitate the restoration of the individual landmark church of St. Luke and St. Matthew located in Fort Greene, Community District 2.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Iffron.
Sorry, taking up a lot of airtime today. Under the provisions of the 74-711 that you put up, what struck me today is that the scale question really refers to the landmark, not to the scale compared to other buildings. How do we get around that question when this, the scale is so significantly different than the landmark structure?
I think the findings related to bulk are how do they relate to the landmark itself and whether that fits within the context. I think beyond just its relationship to the landmark, the adjacent context on Atlantic Avenue here does include a higher-story building there at 470 Vanderbilt, and then it's approximate to Pacific Park, which on Atlantic Avenue would include a lot of new developments that reach higher than the proposed height of the development here.
May I just ask one more question? 470 Vanderbilt is toward us in this photo.
It's the white structure on the far side.
Right, so it, is there a building of similar scale on the other side of the belfry, belfry as we see it?
Yeah, so then there is a commercial building that is used by Verizon on the, on the east here. You can kind of see it in the beige with that roof. So the context on both sides are actually higher than what the base of the building is achieving, and then the total height here is at 312 feet, and the applicants have stated that that height would be in context with the future buildout of Pacific Park, where the corner site at Atlantic and Vanderbilt on the southwest would be up to 313 feet high.
Commissioner Levin.
I have two questions. One is that the briefing sheet indicates that the ownership structure of the two tax lots that are the development site necessitates the construction of two separate buildings. Where are the buildings separated, and how does this relate to the location of affordable housing?
Yeah, so the affordable housing would be dispersed evenly across both two buildings. The split would be at the lot line between lot 1 and lot 59. So the developer of the project is pursuing individual ground leases from two separate tax ownership lots. And as required, I think by DOB, they would not be able to develop a single building, and therefore technically this would be perceived as two buildings being designed as a single project.
Weird. So within the portion of the building that has the entire block front along Atlantic Avenue, it looks like a single building.
Yeah, and so there would be a division on that ground floor plan that indicates that there are two separate buildings on these two separate tax lots that are owned by two separate entities.
Oh, and in fact, the tower is spread, is the tower spread across both tax lots?
I think the tower would be spread across both tax lots.
So are there, are there internal divisions? Are there?
Yeah.
Walls in the corridors? Are there, is there one entrance for the building on lot 59 and another entrance for the lot, the building on lot 1?
So the access to the residential would be from both Vanderbilt and Clinton Avenue to both portions, but I think we can have the applicants explain a little bit more on the internal breakdown of how this tax lot.
Yeah, and whether this.
Ownership is manifesting.
Is it two separate systems, two separate hallways arrangements, et cetera? Okay, and then my other question is about, it looks like we're creating a lot of split lot conditions for the rear yards of those buildings along Clinton Avenue, and I wonder what the justification is for not having the zoning district boundaries, you know, more closely aligned to the, you know, the way they are now, to the tax lots.
So the question is why the zoning boundary is overlapping segments of those lots on Clinton Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. So the development site actually straddles us closer to the centerline, and so, let's see, the, in order to use the full aspects of the rezoning, we need to at least cover all of the lot 1 and lot 59. So the rezoning boundary was determined to be a centerline rather than what it currently is, which, the R7A along Vanderbilt Avenue is only extending 80 feet right now. The block is 200 feet. And so this is just creating a centerline division as opposed to 80 feet, because the 80-feet line wouldn't really work to cover all of lot 1 and 59. When you look at the drawing and you extend it and then you draw a diagonal, it wasn't working out.
Yeah, you end up with a bite out of 59.
Yeah.
And my understanding is that the, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the rear lot condition is, is less than 25 feet, so that there's not a meaningful change to the, to the zoning on those lots?
On the ones on Clinton Avenue?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, then we're certified.
Item 10, page 284, is a non-U-LAR post-referral for an authorization in Brooklyn, Community District 1. Sayed Ahmed is our presenter.
The applicant, 420 Kent Avenue, requests an authorization for phase development of their site and upland connection pursuant to zoning resolution 62-822C. The. The authorization would allow the applicant to seek a TCO for the soon-to-be-completed North Tower and connect the completed waterfront esplanade to Schaefer Landing Esplanade to the south and open it to public through temporary pathway from Kent Avenue. The application was referred to Community Board One on August 6th for 45 days. Community Board One had a public hearing on this application on September 17th. They were unable to vote on this item because they did not have a quorum. However, we do expect a written recommendation in a week or 10 days. Do you want me to go through the plan, phasing plan, quickly?
I think it would be helpful if you could just put up some of the renderings of it.
Sure. The site is located south of the Williamsburg Bridge. It is adjacent to Schaefer Landing, and the development is approximately 857 dwelling units, 186 of them would be affordable. The development provides a waterfront esplanade and an upper-end connection, and the applicant is proposing to provide access to the shore public walkway through two pathways, which are outlined here in yellow. The first pathway will provide access to the completed North Tower. Then it will be shifted to the center of the completed upper-end connection and also providing the access to the shore parkway and to the buildings north and south while they are finishing rest of the upper-end connection. And these are the renderings of the pathways, which will be, you know, will have planters and seedings. And by April of next year, 100% of the waterfront public access areas shown here in green would be completed, along with North and South Towers, and at that time, the whole of the public area will be open to public. In order to grant an authorization, the Commission must find the amount of WPA developed in any phase is proportionate to the lot area being developed. In such phase, the applicant's statement of finding states that they met those findings, and the findings are in your briefing package. Any questions?
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner Levin.
Well, with the delay in hearing from the Community Board, what does that do to our ability to schedule this for a vote? What's the plan?
This is an authorization. There is no clock on our review. I mean, I don't know that we want to necessarily have this linger on for a long, long time, but I believe that we could...
Vote it next, 10, 17?
In the October.
The next cycle?
Yeah.
And we will have heard from the Community Board?
And then we will have heard from the Community Board, and the 15th is available in terms of if there needs to be any follow-up from the Community Board recommendation.
Yeah, that makes sense, because it does seem as if there was some urgency on getting this approved, so I wouldn't want to hold it for super long.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Then we will schedule this for a vote.
Thank you.
Item 11, page 301, is a pre-hearing for a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District Nine. Our presenter is Kevin Kraft.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application by CP6 Crown Heights LLC for a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area, as well as a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area to facilitate the development of 518 units of housing, including 140 permanently affordable units and 15,000 square feet of retail at two non-continuous development sites located at 40 Crown Street and 931 Carroll Street. The project area is located in central Brooklyn on the western edge of Crown Heights, Community District Nine, just east of Prospect Park and roughly two blocks south of Eastern Parkway. The typical built form in the surrounding area consists of two-story attached row houses, four- to seven-story multifamily residential buildings, and two- to four-story mixed-use buildings with ground-floor retail. There are high-rise developments nearby, including Tivoli Towers, a 33-story, roughly 300-foot-tall residential tower, which is located within the project area, as well as the Ebbets Field Houses, a complex of seven 25-story buildings located one block southeast of the project area. There is also a 12-story as-of-right building, which is currently under construction just to the west. There are also several major public facilities and institutions located nearby, including Mega Rivers College Campus, the Brooklyn Botanic Garden and Brooklyn Museum, the Bedford Union Armory, Eastern Parkway, and Prospect Park. In 1991, the project area was rezoned from R6 and R8 districts to contextual R6A and R8A districts as part of the Department of City Planning 13-block rezoning of Washington R6A districts are medium-density contextual districts that allow maximum building heights of 70 feet or 75 feet with a qualifying ground floor and have a maximum FAR of 3.0. And R8A districts are high-density contextual districts that permit an FAR of 6.02 and allow maximum building heights of 120 feet or 125 feet with a qualifying ground floor. The project area is also well-served by transit and is located within the transit zone with access to the 2, 3, 4, and 5 trains, as well as the Franklin Avenue subway shuttle, and the B48 bus line also runs southbound along Franklin Avenue and northbound along Washington and Classen avenues. The project area outlined in the dash-yellow line is two and a half blocks long and 300 feet wide, and consists of Block 1188, which is the northern half block, Block 1189, the middle block front, and Block 1190, the southern block front, and includes two development sites, which are shown in red. The project area is generally bounded by Franklin Avenue to the east, Montgomery Street to the south, a line 300 feet west of and parallel to Franklin Avenue, and the center line between Carroll and President Streets to the north. The Franklin Avenue shuttle right-of-way also runs along the western boundary of the project area. The northern portion of the project area is currently zoned R6A with a C13 overlay and includes residential and commercial uses. This area includes the 931 Carroll Street development site, which is approximately 18,000-square-foot vacant interior lot. The middle block between Crown and Carroll Streets is currently zoned R8A and includes the high-rise Tivoli Towers development and the New York Police Department Transit District 32 building, which you can see in the foreground. And the southern portion is zoned R6A and is currently vacant. The southern portion also includes the 40 Crown Street development site, which is an approximately 56,000-square-foot irregularly-shaped lot that encompasses the entire block front between Crown and Montgomery Streets. The proposed development site also envelopes two vacant parcels owned by the Asian Americans for Equality, which is outlined in the blue dash line. The AAFE sites carry deed restrictions that limit development to buildings with one to four units of affordable housing. These sites are part of the rezoning area but are not part of the proposed development. In response to a question raised by the Commission at certification regarding if the two proposed development sites were former brownfield sites, they are not. However, they will have E-designations for hazardous materials and air quality. There are two developments proposed within the project area, one at 931 Carroll Street and the other at 40 Crown Street. 931 Carroll Street would contain an approximately 135,000-square-foot 16-story residential building, including approximately 128 dwelling units, of which 35 would be permanently affordable, and 37 off-street accessory parking spaces. The 40 Crown Street development would contain an approximately 403-square-foot 16-story mixed-use building consisting of approximately 15,000 square feet of ground-floor retail fronting Franklin Avenue and approximately 388,000 square feet of residential floor area, including approximately 390 dwelling units, of which 105 would be permanently affordable units and 114 off-street parking spaces. Together, the two developments are proposed to include approximately 518 units of housing, including 140 permanently affordable units, 15,000 square feet of retail, and 151 parking spaces, at a total of 7.2 FAR. The actions necessary to facilitate the project include a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from R6A, R6A with a C13 overlay, and R8A to R8X and R8X with a C24 commercial overlay. R8X is a contextual residential district that allows residential and community facility uses. When mapped within a mandatory inclusionary housing area, the maximum FAR is 7.2, and the maximum building height is 170 feet or 175 feet with a qualifying ground floor. C24 districts allow local retail uses. The second action includes a zoning text amendment to designate a new mandatory inclusionary housing area on the northern half block and on the southern block front of the project area. The applicant is proposing to utilize MIH option 1. This application was certified by the Department of City Planning on June 11, 2018, and on June 26, Community Board Nine held a public hearing and voted to disapprove the application with no recommendations or conditions. None in favor, 17 opposed, and seven abstaining. On September 4, 2018, the Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing. However, we have yet to receive the recommendation for that. Thank you, happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Marin.
Not a question, but moreover, is there any way of speaking to HPD? I mean, it seems like these two lots, it's a loss to have these two lots owned by AFFY and Shadow, then restricted to four stories, where if the restrictions were lifted, would allow AFFY the opportunity to sell the lots and be congruently built with this development. It just seems like a lost opportunity.
I do believe AFFY actually was originally part of the proposal a couple of years back when it first came to our office. They also could come through with an action, HPD could come through with a discretionary action to try to amend the UDEP.
And we can speak with HPD and pass along the suggestion.
I think that would prove it in this case.
Other questions? Okay, then we, oh yes, Commissioner D.
Could you just speak to the scale of the larger building and sort of the land use rationale of the jump from the R6 to 8? Doesn't seem like, I mean, well, if you could speak to that.
Yeah, so immediately to the west is an R8A district, just across the subway cut. Also, it's an irregularly-shaped block, so the R8X gives a little bit of more flexibility as far as being able to fit the bulk on the site, because you're going around the AFFY sites. And then also you have the Tivoli Towers site, which is in the project area, which is roughly 300 feet tall, and it's very transit-accessible. You also have three 70-foot-wide streets surrounding the block, as well as the rail cut, which ranges between 70 feet wide and 80 feet wide.
What's the differential between the immediate context, sort of the R6 and these buildings in terms of?
So in R8X, the maximum building height could be 175 feet. From the R6, I believe the maximum height is 70 feet or 75 feet.
What are we generally seeing there?
We're seeing a mixed composition. As I stated earlier, there's a 12-story as-of-right building that's immediately to the west of the site, just on the other side of the rail cut, and just to the north is Tivoli Towers. A block to the southeast is Ebbets Field Houses, which are 27 stories. You also have Bedford Union Armory, a couple of blocks to the north, which is going to be 16 stories. So we're really seeing a juxtaposition of different scales. There's also a large amount of six- to seven-story apartment buildings in the area.
But not in the immediate context? I mean, if you could go back to that and just say, I'm just struck by that.
So the 12-story building is under construction right here, just to the west. Then you have Tivoli Towers here. Then you have the six- to seven-story apartment buildings along Washington Avenue. Bedford Union Armory is a couple of blocks to the northeast, and Ebbets Field Houses are just right here, which are 27 stories. So we are seeing a fair amount of different building types. There's also, like I stated, the R8A district is just along here on Washington Avenue.
We didn't get anything from the Community Board.
No.
Do you know, can you speak to that hearing? Was anybody there, or will somebody be here to speak to their issues and concerns?
Their issues and concerns were about shadow impacts from the proposed building, also just typical gentrification in the area. It's a rapidly gentrifying area. I don't know if anybody from the Community Board will be here to speak on that, but I anticipate some people coming out to the public hearing.
We've had this now a few times, where we have, you know, Community Boards that clearly, you know, the full board voting against something, and we have no clue as to what their issues or concerns are. And I'm just sort of asking, you know, what recourse do we have to, you know, compel some sort of input from them at this decision-making juncture?
I would say that we don't have, we can't compel them to do things, but I will note that we, as an agency, are taking on Community Board member training much more proactively, and in fact are scheduling periods where Community Board members are going to be coming here and receiving training from staff. And I think one of the things we will definitely emphasize to them is that they should always include some kind of rationale as part of their recommendation.
I'll note that we share your concern with that, because it's an opportunity for a voice for suggestions. Traditionally, the trainings have been done by our borough offices for new Community Board members. We decided that it made sense, we're offering trainings for Community Board leadership and for the Land Use Committee leadership. We're holding three different sessions, different times of day in this room, and then that will be followed up on by our borough offices offering trainings to the entirety of the Community Boards. And again, we can't force people to attend, but we are amping up our attempts to get meaningful input.
And what role does a district manager play in that? That's a paid position, correct?
They are paid positions. I can speak to my experience as a borough planner and it depended on the district manager. Some of them were quite sort of empowered and also would facilitate that and say, here's what we want to say, does that sound good? And others let the...
But it's not part of their job description? No?
No, it's not really part of their job description.
Okay, I mean, it's helpful to know.
Nancy Reagan approach, just say no. I mean, maybe not here, but...
Thank you very much.
Okay, so this will go to a public hearing on Wednesday.
Okay, moving on to city council modifications. We have a number of city council modifications. The first is for the 205 Park Avenue zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District Two. This modification is to the mandatory inclusionary housing options. The modification will remove option 2 and add the deep affordability option. The staff notes that this modification is within scope.
So I will ask for an assent by show of hands to send the letter to the council saying it's in scope. Okay, done.
The next modification is for the NYPD evidence storage Erie Basin acquisition for continued use in Brooklyn Community District Six. Aline Fader is here to discuss.
I'll be very quick. The modification that they're requesting is to simply put a 10-year term on the lease for the site for the NYPD.
Any questions? Okay, once again, a senpai show of hands to send the mod letter. Done.
Okay, the next modification is to the 80 Flatbush Project, which is a series of actions in Brooklyn Community District Two. Anan Aman is here to discuss.
Commissioners, you may recall that the 80 Flatbush application was approved by the CPC in early August. It's come back with modifications from the city council. The primary modification is to the C69 district with a reduction in the overall FAR from 18 to 15, and conditioning the 15 FAR to projects or sites with schools on them, and then affording an exemption of 46,050 square feet for school space. Additionally, there were overall bulk modifications that included a reduction to the tower heights. Phase 1 is now reduced by 50 feet, bringing it lower than the historic Williamsburg Savings Bank Tower, and Phase 2 is docked approximately by 160 feet. There's also an introduction of a 30-foot setback on Third Avenue for the Phase 2 Tower, and there is the removal of the loading dock on State Street. So looking at the new C69 district, the base FAR for the district would be 9 for residential use and 12 for commercial or community facility use. However, if the site itself is larger than 50,000 square feet and contains at least 100,000 square feet of school space pursuant... 100,000 square feet of school space pursuant to an agreement with ECF, the FAR increases to 12 for residential use and 15 for commercial community facility use. And it would allow for an exemption of $46,050 square feet of school space, which is effectively .75 FAR. So, overall, the application is at 15.75 FAR. Here you can see what the earlier proposed heights were, approximately 986 and 561, and with the new reductions, you can see in context. And then, this was a prior approved project. Here on Third Avenue, you can see that the Phase 2 Tower was adjacent to Third. And with the 30-foot setback, there's more room from the street. And here, you can see that there's additional bulk here at the base, which is allowing for some of the height reduction. And then here on State Street, formerly there was a loading dock on the Phase 1 Tower, and now it's no curb cut and just a service entrance. And then this was a rendering of the prior proposal, and then the resulting proposal.
Okay, then we've determined that these are within scope, and I'd ask for an assent by a show of hands to send such a letter to the council. Done.
And finally, a modification to the 3122, 3136 Victory Boulevard rezoning in Staten Island Community District 2. Barry Fisher is here to present.
City Council is proposing to modify the boundary of a proposed rezoning from R3X with a C22 commercial overlay to a C81 district that the commission had approved on August 22nd. As a reminder, the rezoning would legalize and allow expansion of existing automotive businesses in the Bull's Head section of Staten Island, Community District 2. The diagram at the left shows the rezoning boundary as requested by the applicant and approved by the commission last month, which provides a single continuous district across all existing commercial uses within the block. As shown on the diagram to the right, the city council proposes to modify the extent of the C81 zoning district to exclude this block, 2159 Lot 1, which is a corner lot at the corner of Victory Boulevard and Richmond Avenue, and currently has a Tim Hortons restaurant. And the modification would retain its existing zoning. This lot is not owned by the applicant. The city council has indicated that, given its current use and that the advertising signs or billboards would become permitted by the proposed C81 zoning, the proposed rezoning is not appropriate for this particular site. The result of the modification is a mid-block C81 zoning designation, which the department typically does not consider to be rational zoning boundary. However, the proposed modification represents a reduction in the extent of the land use action, so the requested modification is within scope.
On this, I'm going to note that while the modification is in scope, we as a department find it very hard to discern the sound land use rationale for this. As a result of the modification, and as this picture makes abundantly clear, the C8 district is limited to two mid-block properties, while the corner property at the intersection of two wide avenues and which is already developed for auto-oriented commercial use is retaining the lower intensity of the current C2 commercial overlay. We look at it and say, higher density in the mid-block, more intense commercial uses on the mid-block, which, as this shows, is much more embedded in the residential neighborhood. We find it hard to understand the land use rationale. I also have to say that, this is an understatement, that it's disappointing and unacceptable that assurances that were made to the commission in writing by the applicant's attorney, Adam Rothkrug, were not followed. But for these assurances at the time of the vote, I think that the commission may well have considered the application differently. And I do want to emphasize, this is not about the applicant. The applicant is a small business owner that wants to expand. This is directed to the applicant's attorney. The department, and I believe I speak for the commission, just don't take well to having lawyers make premature representations to us with no qualifications that don't ultimately come to pass. At its core, my concern is that the applicant's lawyers are looking to resolve a very site-specific issue that properly belongs before the Board of Standards and Appeals, and through these premature representations, is the kindest thing that I can call it, they are basically looking to turn the CPC action into a BSA action. And so it is with reluctance that I have to ask for, well, first discussion and then ultimately a vote. Yes, Commissioner Ortiz.
Is there a concern that this will open us up to allegations of spot zoning? We just talked about that a few minutes ago.
No, that is why, had the applicant's lawyer not made the representations in writing that didn't come to pass, I can certainly imagine, having recommended that, the commission vote down the application, if it were to look like what is now before us. Yes, Commissioner 11.
Just to be clear, the representation was that they were in discussions with Tim Hortons, the owner of the Tim Hortons?
Not in discussions.
They had a deal.
Obtained confirmation from the two other affected property owners.
And then that turned out not to be the case by the time they got to the council?
Yes. Okay, so I do have to ask, since it is within scope, for an assent by show of hands to send such a letter to the council? Okay, thank you.
For future votes, on Wednesday, September 26, staff have prepared reports for the Hebrew Home for the Aged, the 2050 Barto Avenue Animal Shelter, the DOHMH Mobile Food Vendor Inspection Site Selection, 3901 Ninth Avenue rezoning, the Friends of Crown Heights 16 Child Care Center, the Variety Boys and Girls Club rezoning, 1114 35th Avenue rezoning, the St. Michael's Park elimination, 550 Madison Avenue Landmark, and the Staten Island Coastal Risk Management Phase 2 Site Selection and Mapping Actions. Additionally, there are decisions scheduled for 2420 Arthur Kill Road, which is a South Richmond authorizations, 68 Collins Street certification for future subdivision in the special South Richmond district, and 50 Weaver Street certification for future subdivision in the special South Richmond district. On Monday, October 15, there will be a special meeting, and staff have prepared a report for 599 Cortlandt Avenue. For post-hearing follow-up, we have Jackie Sunwoo is here to discuss the M1 Hotel Text Amendment.
I'll try to make this as quickly as possible. Since we referred out the M1 Hotel Text Amendment on April 23, we have received a few questions regarding the vesting provisions for the proposal, so I just wanted to take some time to clarify the vesting provision. So, I'll start by spelling out the standard vesting provisions that is spelled out in the zoning resolution under Section 1130. This isn't part of the M1 Hotel Text Amendment, but a standard vesting rule within zoning. If one wants to build a commercial hotel under the standard vesting rules, it must meet the following requirements on the slides here. First, the project must have a lawfully issued building permit from the Department of Buildings before the effective date of the relevant proposal. The zoning resolution defines a lawfully issued building permit as one that is based on approved application, showing complete plans and specifications, authorizing the entire construction, not just a portion of it. Next, once the building permit is issued, the foundation must be completed prior to the date of adoption of the amendment. In the event that such required foundations have not been completed before the date of adoption of the text, the building permit will automatically lapse, and the right to continue construction will terminate. I do want to note that the developer, however, will have 30 days after the permit lapses to go to the BSA to renew the permit, but it will have to show that it made substantial progress on the construction of the foundation. In addition to the standard vesting provision I just explained, the M1 Hotel Text Amendment proposed an alternative vesting provision. First, if a transient hotel development obtained a building permit or a partial permit, such as a foundation permit from the Department of Buildings by the referral date, which was April 23, its construction may start or continue. For conversions or enlargements, however, they would have had to obtain a full building permit, not a partial permit. In other words, hotel developments that meet these requirements are vested under the provision of the M1 Hotel Text Amendment. Further, these vested projects have three years since the date of adoption of the text to complete construction, or receive a certificate of occupancy, or a temporary certificate of occupancy. If this requirement isn't met within the three years after the effective date of the text amendment, the building permit will lapse and the right to continue construction will terminate as well. This is similar to the vesting provision that was set forth in the East Midtown Special Purpose District, which set precedent for this proposal. Based on this precedent, we decided on the specific date of April 23 because there were already a number of projects that were pretty far along in the process, and the vesting provision was already liberal enough to account for these projects that were in the pipeline. But when this provision was referred out, one of the requests we've received was to extend the vesting date from the date of referral to the date of adoption of the text. So, in order to assess this, we wanted to see how many buildings would actually get pulled in if we were to make such a modification. So, as of September 13, which is when we pulled this data together, there were a total of 13 projects in M1 districts that obtained building permits from DOB after the date of referral. So, this means these projects were actually not vested under the M1 Hotel vesting provision. One out of the 13 projects is an alteration project, and the remaining 12 are new building projects. Further analysis, this showed that there doesn't seem to be active construction going on in these sites currently, so it is difficult for us to discern if they're planning on coming in for a special permit under the M1 Hotel, or if they're trying to comply by the standard vesting rules, or go to the BSA. I also wanted to note that, as of July of this year, we identified that there were around 140 hotel rooms citywide, hotel projects citywide that were under construction. And in addition, there were around 140 hotels that were also in pre-construction stages. And the pre-constructed, the hotels in the pre-construction stage actually means that they don't have permits obtained from the Department of Buildings, but they either have zoning approvals or are in the midst of going through a plan examination process with DOB. I also want to note that eight of these 13 projects that I mentioned before are actually a subset of the pre-constructed hotel projects here. So, if I can note here, these 45 projects, eight out of these 45 actually obtained permits between the April date of referral and July. So, I'm getting the numbers kind of confused here, but the remaining five of the 13 projects are not captured in this table, actually, because they obtained building permits in August. So, to summarize, as of mid-September, there are approximately 37 hotel projects that are actually in the pre-construction stages, and 60 are projects that are under construction. So, if this modification is to be made to extend the vesting date, it could potentially create a permit rush at the Department of Buildings, trying to obtain permits in order to complete construction.
Jackie, what is the significance of July versus August?
Well, we initially pulled the pipeline data in July for both M1 and citywide, but for this number right here, we couldn't pull these numbers for citywide, and this is just M1 districts. So I didn't want to confuse the dates here, so we separated out the two tables.
But the standard vesting, though, would have a lawfully issued building permit on the effective date of the text amendment, which would be out in the future.
That's correct.
The one thing I want to note is a similarity between, like, what's the same between Greater East Midtown and the M1 Hotel? They were both initiatives that were long signaled for years ahead of time, and so a notion that any landowner would be surprised that it was coming, I would think, would be put to rest by the fact that they were both so long signaled. Yes, Commissioner Marin?
I just have a question. I know that I asked over at Harley Review, were we able to discern how many hotels are actually acting in hotel capacity, I would say, and those hotels that were built as shelters?
I actually do not have those numbers in front of me. I believe we got some numbers from DHS previously, so I can get back to you on that one. I just don't have the numbers in front of me right now.
Okay, and just to confirm, the department continues to believe that the proposal for the special M1 Hotel Text Amendment vesting period is appropriate, and that's what we will be bringing forward for a vote.
Also, for post-hearing follow-up, the Friends of Crown Heights 17 Site Selection, or Acquisition, I mean, for daycare center, the DOT Brooklyn Fleet Services, also Acquisition Site Selection, and then the Marcus Garvey Large-Scale General Development. I believe Anthony is here with some post-hearing.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to mention, you would notice in your materials that the Brooklyn Borough President's recommendation was submitted after the CPC public hearing, and so it was provided in the materials. The recommendation is for approval with conditions. The conditions include reductions to the rezoning boundaries, changes to the design of all seven buildings, changes to the waivers included in the special permits, the addition of parking spaces to the site plan, as well as changes to the MIH options that are proposed. Additional recommendations are included that are directed towards the city council and other agencies as well. We acknowledge the Borough President's goal to design buildings that respond to the adjacent contexts at certain locations, and we also note that the applicant's team has worked collaboratively with DCP's urban design staff on crafting the design that does respond appropriately to the unique site conditions and the surrounding context. The department is comfortable with the building designs as proposed by the applicants in the certified application. I'm happy to answer questions about this recommendation, and also, I could prepare additional information about any particular recommendations at the commission's request.
I'll note that generally, when modifications are modest, we're able to come forward and explain what the differences are. Here, it is a pretty fundamental redesign of the project, and so we stepped back and reexamined the proposal that came forward, and I'll note the significant role that the department played in putting together the massing. If commissioners were interested in any particular facet, we could dive in. Okay, thank you, Anthony.
Thanks. The UFBCO Child Care Center, 9 Orchard Street. I believe, unless there are any other questions or business?
We're out of here.
Okay, this concludes the review session. Okay, this concludes the review session for the New York City Planning Commission for Monday, September 24th. The time is 4:55.